So we've, we're just coming back from closed session and I wanted to give the floor to Liz Chides, who we're very happy is back and who is going to give the announcement that she usually makes at the beginning of the meeting. Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Liz, you're on mute.
Liz, you have to unmute yourself.
There we go. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you. Este mensaje sera repetido en español en unos momentos. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear approximately 30 minutes of public comments. At the end of the meeting, which will end at around 10:00 PM, there will be a second opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end of the meeting. To comment by video conference, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the raise your hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When called upon, you will be unmuted. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing asterisk nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda. Item. When called upon, you will be unmuted. After the allotted time, you will once again be re-muted. The board president usually will call our students first. Please note that if there are a lot of people who want to make public comment, not everyone who raises their hand will get to speak. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at two or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, the board president has also discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speech needs. When your time has elapsed, you will hear your time is up if you are still speaking. When your time is up, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please do not try to speak beyond your time. We understand that there are really important issues that many people feel very passionate about. But in order to hear, to be fair to all speakers and so we can hear from as many speakers as possible, the board president will ask you to stop once your time has elapsed and will ask if mic be turned off if it is necessary. Vamos a proporcionarles un breve resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos procedimientos preliminarios, un periodo de 30 minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las 10 de la noche, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para comentario de parte de miembros de la audiencia que no pudieron proporcionar comentario durante la primera oportunidad. Para comentar por videoconferencia, haga clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y seleccione el botón levantar la mano o raise your hand para solicitar hablar cuando se está aceptando comentario público durante el artículo elegible de la agenda. Cuando la llamen, le van a permitir hablar. Después del tiempo asignado, le volverán a silenciar. Para comentar por teléfono, se le pide, se pedirá que levante la mano presionando estrella nueve para solicitar hablar cuando se esté tomando comentario público sobre el tema elegible de la agenda. Cuando lo llamen, le van a permitir hablar. Después del tiempo asignado, lo volverán a silenciar. Usualmente, la presidenta llamará a los estudiantes primero. Por favor, tome en cuenta que si hay demasiada gente que quiere hacer comentario público, no todos los que levantaron la mano serán seleccionados para hablar. La presidenta de la mesa directiva determinará si otorgará dos o tres minutos por orador. La presidenta también tiene la discreción de otorgar minutos adicionales a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adaptación especial. Cuando haya transcurrido su tiempo, escuchará. Su tiempo se ha acabado. Si todavía está hablando cuando se acaba el tiempo, puede terminar su oración, pero por favor, trate de no sobrepasarse de su tiempo. Entendemos que hay diferentes cuestiones que son de importancia para diferentes personas. Sin embargo, pedimos que respete el tiempo otorgado de manera que podemos escuchar a la mayoría del público posible. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, Lynn. So I'm, can you please take roll?
Yes. Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Director Khadija Brown.
Present.
Director Bethany Slava Cutler. President Ty Alper.
Present.
President Judy Appel.
I'm here.
Are the student directors on?
Yeah, well, one is.
I'm just having problems with my camera. Hi, guys.
Hi, Director Estella Ham.
Yes, present.
All right, great. So now we're going to approve the agenda. Are there any requested changes to the agenda that we have for this evening?
I'll move the agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, and Liz, I think we need to take roll call votes for every vote.
That's right. That's right.
Oh, so are you?
Oh, sorry. Director Julie Sinai.
Yes.
Director Khadija Brown.
Yes.
Director Bethany Slava Cutler.
Yes.
Director Estella Ham.
Yes.
Vice President Ty Alper.
Yes.
President Judy Appel.
Yes.
So can I just, if someone who's not muted, it sounds like there's a radio on in the background.
Your telephone?
Or a telephone, just to make sure it's all off. Thank you.
All right. So now I'm going to go over the agenda a little bit. And, you know, I'm working on doing this remotely, so we'll see how that goes. Oops. I have to get the agenda up. One second.
President Appel, were you going to do the report on closed session after this or before?
I was going to do it after, but go ahead. Why don't you go ahead and do that now?
Okay, I'm going to do the report from closed session. The closed session was called to order at 5:00. In item number 3.1.1 OAH, case number 2019120508, there was a motion by myself, Vice President Alper, second by Director Leva Cutler, to accept the staff recommendation. All voted in favor and the motion passed 5 to 0. In case number 3.2.1, number 201920-09, there was a motion by President Appel, second by Director Leva Cutler, to accept the staff recommendation and provide further direction to staff. Directors Brown and Sinai voted in favor of the motion. Vice President Alper, myself recused himself and the motion passed 4 to 0. In item 3.2.2, case number 201920-10, the board heard an update and gave direction to staff. Item 3.3, the board heard an update on the collective bargaining with respect to all four of our unions and gave direction. And in item 3.4.1, there was a motion by Director Brown, second by Director Sinai to approve the superintendent's recommendation. All voted in favor and the motion passed 5 to 0. And that concludes the report from closed session.
Thank you, Vice President. That was super helpful and I was able to call up the agenda in the meantime. So I just want to go over the agenda now. I'm hoping that those of you who have called in know where to access the agenda. I believe, I believe you probably have an email with the link to the agenda. It's where it always is, online. And I just wanted to go over the agenda and what we'll be covering today. So we're going to start with, we always, after we report back from closed session, we always have the board members and the superintendent have a little time to share with you some of our thoughts. If we choose to take that time. And then we have a consent calendar and the consent calendar for me, for today, includes the approval of memos of understanding with our different, with our different employee unions. And most of those have, and all of them actually, have to do with an understanding of what expectations will be and what the agreement will be during the COVID-19 closing. That's this year. They go up till June 30. And there's a couple of other contracts. And then we are going to go into our action items. Now, we're going to have an update on our COVID-19 and the BUSD response. Staff has been working very, very hard and so they're going to give us some updates. And then we are going to turn back to the budget, really. We're going to have a recommendation for the expenditure of BSET funds. The superintendent has been coming to us for several weeks with, as he's been building his recommendations for reductions. And we'll have to decide then, you know, whether we want to approve those today or wait. And then there's an approval of recommendation for the new BARA funds, different strategies for recruitment and retention and development. And then the annual declaration of need for fully qualified teachers. So that's our meeting and we will probably go until, I don't know. Our hope is to end, you know, we started a half an hour earlier, so hopefully it will end well before 10:30. But, you know, we'll see how much time this takes. So I want to, I want to now turn it over to the board members for your comments. So.
We're doing public comments first.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I got confused. My script is wrong. So we're going to do public comments and, you know, Jay, we didn't really talk about how we were going to do this. So, and I honestly can't remember how you told me last time. So why don't you go ahead and chat? Can you chat just with me? Who is next?
I think the plan, we need to invite public comment from the attendees by telling them to raise their hand now.
Okay.
I see the question answered. There's Laura Babitz in, online. She's here to speak.
But she's here for a committee.
She's here for committee comments.
So now is the time for those of you who are listening in, if you'd like to make a public comment, please raise your hand on the attendees list. That's part of the participants, in the participants tab, you go to the attendees and then just in the bottom left-hand corner, there's a little, a little sign to raise your hand. And so if you, if you want to speak, please raise your hand. Oh, okay. So I'm going to start with Mimi Pollitt. And you have, you'll have three minutes to make a comment.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted.
Yep.
Yes.
Great. I just wanted to say that I know that in past years, when there have been budget reduction proposals, that often the high school counselors, there are plans to reduce the number of counselors either at Berkeley High or make some new combination with BTEC BIS. And I just wanted to put out that in light of what's happening this year, that although I think we always need to have our counselors, the staffing that we have, I really think it's going to be very important to have counselors next year. I think that they will have a lot of additional responsibilities to compensate for what's happened this year and deal with things in new ways. And that's all I really have to say. I just wanted to advocate for the counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mimi. The next person on the list here is Berkeley PTA Council Webmaster. I'm sure who that is.
I know, Judy, this is Rob Collier. I'd actually like to speak in the PT Council slot.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind. Julia Sen. Julia Sen, I think you're. You're on. You might be on mute because we're not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. Hi, my name's Julia Sen. I'm a parent of two children at Sylvia Mendez. And my question is about hourly employees. And so I'm just wondering if you all will be able to address that during your comments because we, our PTA members saw that there were MOUs with all of the unions. And on the agenda tonight, we have four amazing bilingual tutors who are hourly employees at our school. And we want to know kind of what their future is for them for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Yes, we will be, I think we will be addressing that during the COVID-19 update.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so it looks to me, and you guys, you should keep keeping me honest because I can use the help. I believe that there's no other public comment. Is that true? Is there any that came in in another way, Jay or Natasha?
No.
Okay, so we're going to now, and people should know that there's another opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. So I'm going to now go and see if there's anyone here from any of the unions who would like to speak. Will you just let me know if you do? Okay, I'm going to assume that means no. So now I do think we have some committee representatives who are here. Laura Babett, I heard that you were here and you wanted to speak on behalf of a committee. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, BUSD Board of Directors. The PAC would like you to know that we cannot stand for a business as usual response in the midst of a crisis. The first topic PAC members continually want to discuss is how are we going to modify our programming to address the increased achievement gap? That some low-income elementary school students are just being provided laptops this week confirms that the pre-existing gap has already increased. Therefore, we must stop the business as usual mindset. We talk equity, but we are not being diligent about programming to achieve equity. Every PAC since its inception, repeatedly says, this board, data, evaluation, assess, reassess. It's even on page eight of the first LCAP plan from the 2014-2015 school year, yet in the midst of impending cuts. Five years later, data which can guide best practices or program effectiveness still remains unavailable and/or ungathered. Board, we cannot look away from this glaring need. And we, the PAC, will not stand for a business as usual response. We will not support a budget that maintains the status quo and we will not allow it to go unnoticed that underserved students' current needs are being blatantly ignored in next year's budget priorities. But board, what is your strategy? What is your plan to get a different result? A few ideas the PAC would offer include, number one, in response to the impact of remote learning for the underserved, consider additional small group summer school opportunities, remote or physical. Plan for annual early-back programs and specialized after-school programs that will begin this fall. We cannot ignore the needs of the students who will slip behind even further because of remote learning. We have the ASI. We know who they are. Number two, incorporate learning modality needs in the curriculum building for all teachers, leveraging the current district TSA curriculum building model. Number three, develop a metric to ensure specific LCAP supplemental funded programs are comprehensively evaluated. This could be based on the highest cost per student LCAP program or any program over $250,000 per goal, as an example. But to say we are not able to effectively evaluate these initiatives should no longer be tolerated. As BUSD will be required to restructure all of its programming, giving the expected decline in funding, the time to address this internal equity crisis is also now. We hope this will include deep collaboration with the elected and required by law PAC. We know the impact of family engagement and the time-consuming work of parent empowerment. Our ideas would include partnering with your county to provide on-campus social workers to address the increased headwinds of our families. This would greatly support our OFE and McKinney-Bento staff. Other school districts have this. Why not BUSD? In closing, we hope that your strategy as a board will include more equity than lip service. We hope that you will demand of the district a strategy that will align with the voters of this community who repeatedly say effective support for struggling students is our number one concern. The citizens that recently passed a new tax measure to pay our teachers higher salaries and have now donated over $300,000 out of their personal funds to support vulnerable students and families during this COVID-19 crisis. Now, more than ever, LCAP and all of BUSD for that matter, needs a strategy for metrics and assessments to make informed decisions. A plan to realize the aid for accountability in the LCAP plan and a systemic way to move forward so that equity is not the first thing we say, but get to later. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Now I'm going to move to Rob Collier, speaking on behalf of the PTA Council.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'd like to speak on the various budget items before you at tonight's meeting and the meetings to come. During the past month, the district, the board, and the entire community have been very necessarily preoccupied with the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to create a system of distance learning. Unfortunately, our schools may also soon face severe and unexpected financial problems. According to recent news reports, the economic crisis is deeply impacting California state government because of the drop in, the drop in revenue from income tax and sales taxes, which in turn creates a growing chance that the state may be forced to eliminate its cost of living adjustment and other payments and grants to school districts. For example, if Governor Newsom were to eliminate the 2020 COLA completely, as the San Francisco Chronicle has reported, is being considered, that would reduce BUSD revenues by millions of dollars. Now, there's no way of knowing for sure what's going to happen, but from the PTA Council's perspective, what Berkeley families don't want is a last-minute budget crisis in which emergency cuts have to be made without community input. Some of the potential budget choices could be especially damaging for teachers and staff, schools, and the quality of education that our children receive. So if more cuts to the general fund are needed, we hope the superintendent's budget advisory committee will be reconvened in a timely way. And if the SBACK and the board's budget process need to be extended into the summer, well, so be it. We hope that the board will be appropriately conservative in its budget decisions tonight and in the coming meetings. Hard times accompanied by painful decisions may be ahead of us. And this difficult conversation needs to start as soon as possible. Thank you very much and the best of luck to all of us.
Thank you, Rob. Are there any other representatives of committees participating? If so, maybe you can let Natasha or Jay know or raise your hand on the attendee list or something. Okay, so thank you, public, and thank you committees for speaking out tonight. Now I'm going to move to the board member and superintendent comments. And I will start with Director Leva Cutler. Do you have comments?
Yes, yes, I do. All of this has given me a lot, being home and sheltered has given me a lot of time to think. And first, I want to give my condolences to our, condolences to our community who have family and friends that have died of COVID or who have been fighting right now COVID. And I'm thankful for those that have survived the illness and everyone who's doing their part in sheltering in and the emergency responders in our community. We're living in a moment with so many unknowns, new territory, new protocols, and things to think about that none of us in today's world would have ever thought we would have to do, like covering our mouths with masks, social distancing, online learning, and working remotely or being unemployed. Never did we think what it would look like globally for everyone to pause and that their children would be learning from home with their parents as their teacher and that our teachers would be teaching from their home, their students, and their own children from preschool all the way through college. The most interesting part of all this is that we're not alone in this time and space as universally. All learning from preschool to college is happening on a global level. We're all learning how local actions like social distancing have global repercussions. There's so much to learn from these days that will keep us thinking and reflecting for years to come. Let us make sure to appreciate this time as challenging as it is to be in our homes that we didn't have before, this time with our children. And not to forget to reach out and help a person, an organization, a student, a parent. Find something every day to be grateful for and pay it forward. We're having success in building the ship as we sail away, and yes, we are making mistakes and learning from them. Please trust that our superintendent, our district teachers and classified and school board and our parent community, that we are all putting our best thinking together. We can build a ship together if we are patient, cooperative, and agree to understand that our journey will have challenges and we can get through this if we stick together and leave no one behind. Like many of our parents and teachers, I'm particularly concerned about the students who will fall behind in their studies, in their academics, or that this isolation and separation will cause emotional setbacks or issues for our students. And so I'll be pushing for a curriculum and time to find a way for our students and their teachers to make time and space to address the impact the closure has had on them individually and as a family and a community. Our planning for those students who are falling behind happens now. It mustn't wait until we go back to school in August. We know who these students are. It's incumbent on our district to have a plan for these students, teachers, staff, and parents. I welcome hearing from this, with everyone, our community, and looking forward to hearing from the superintendent what that plan will be. Thank you.
You're muted, Judy.
Thank you, Vice President Alper. I'm going to move next to Director Sinai.
Good evening. Thank you all for tuning in. I guess this is when Josh, former school board member, used to say, we have thousands of viewers. It brings a whole different level of who's viewing our school board meetings these days. I want to start out by just thanking all of the families for the patience and the commitment to remain engaged with your schools and your teachers and the district to really work diligently on how we partner together to meet the needs of our students. This, as Director Leva Cutler said, this is a day that none of us ever prepared or expected to come. And all of our institutions are turning on a dime. And there is a tremendous learning curve that we're all managing, both on a personal level as well as on professional level. So I want to thank people for their patience. And I want to thank all of the families that participated in the town hall in the last week. I know it's been a very challenging time. And I have confidence that we'll continue to move forward, knowing that there will continue to be some bumps and rocks along the way. I want to also extend sincere appreciation to all of our staff and our teachers and our administrators who have been working diligently to come up with these new ways of educating our students, new ways of communicating with each other on how to educate our students. And again, it takes a tremendous amount of patience. And, you know, again, I've mentioned this before, coming out of, I work in healthcare. We're doing as much as we can to start every meeting on these Zoom panels with a mindfulness moment. A lot of us are spending hours upon hours in front of computers. And we need to be careful about how much time we're expecting our students to be sitting in front of computers and how do we really create a balance for ourselves as well as our children. I wanted to just mention, you know, some of our most vulnerable communities and responding to, you know, what Ms. Babett said is the economic crisis is only going to you know, what Ms. Babbitt said is, "The economic crisis is only going to accentuate the impact of our most vulnerable communities in the coming months and years." And we just learned recently, again, in the healthcare field, that with the unemployment rate rising and many businesses potentially closing for good, the amount of unemployment is going to be severe. And they're expecting in Alameda County alone, the potential of 100,000 people who are going to be eligible for Medicaid. So we really need to take stock in how we support our community, how we support our children, and what our kids and families are going to need right now. People have probably been reading in the newspaper that conditions like what we're seeing now create high risk for domestic violence. There's all sorts of things that we need to do to support our children and our families and our staff. The needs of our undocumented community, fortunately, the governor just announced an allocation of, I think, $125 million. That is going to be contributed to the needs of our undocumented community. So again, I think there's a lot, as Director Leva Cutler said, there's a lot to be grateful for. There's a lot of gratitude that we need to express, and there's a lot of solidarity and compassion that we need to share for each other. And I think as we're going into the next few weeks of the school year and we're planning for our budget, it's all the more important we think about how we're going to make sure we meet the needs of all of our students and our students who are going to be in some of the most vulnerable situations. And I appreciate the PAC and the meeting, all the parents who've been meeting over Zoom over the last couple of weeks has been amazing. But the PAC has said over and over again, year after year, and Laura reinforced it, is we need to be driven by data. And I think that's going to be even more important than it has been in the past, though it's always been important, as we look at what our LCAP is going to look at and our school district priorities. So while it's really hard to think about how we're going to generate that data that we know we need, we have to figure out how to commit the time to look at our students across the board and what it is, what are the programs that are actually working and that we cannot afford to eliminate or to reduce. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Now I'm going to move to Director Brown. Oh, there you are.
Pass.
You're going to pass? Okay. Director, Vice President, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to actually call on Student Director Estella. Um, Helle?
Hi. My internet is a little bit spotty, so I might cut in and out. But, um, yeah. Hi, everyone. I'm so sorry my video isn't working. This feels so less personal. But it's nice to see all you guys, and I don't really want to take up too much time with my comments, but I just really want to, you know, put my thoughts with the people who are really struggling with this, not just like health-wise, but especially financially. And, you know, I'm really proud and happy of those who are taking this shelter in place seriously. I think that it's super important that we acknowledge that because it is so hard, you know, staying inside, especially for some people who don't have great situations to stay inside all day. So that's the most of what I have to say. I hope everyone is doing well and, you know, staying healthy and enjoying time with their families or their pets, or just some time to kind of, you know, discover new hobbies, discover things about themselves, things about the world around us. I think that this is a really big turning point for our society. I think it has a lot of potential to kind of open our eyes to, you know, a lot of things that are just realities of the world that we live in. So I hope that there are some silver linings in this, but I definitely want to acknowledge how hard it is, especially for some people more than others. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I'm now going to turn to Vice President Alper.
I'm good, thanks.
You are? Okay, then I'm going to turn to me. First of all, I do want to say that there's a chance that I might have to leave early. I actually have been sick, and so just I want people to know that. And I want to repeat some of the comments I made at the town hall because I don't know if all of the same people are participating tonight. But I, and I want to thank all of you so much for participating here. I want to thank all of the many hundreds of you who tuned in during the town hall and all of the parents who are working with their kids, have their kids at home, and all of you who are working with us to help figure out what we're going to do now. I want to echo that I do believe that the, that the, that our staff, our superintendent, and, no, Assistant Associate Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent, like all of the folks who used to work at 2020 Bonnar have been working very hard to figure out how to bring quality education to our students. And they're all really, many of them are brand new, so it's, I'm sure, a challenge that none of us anticipated, although I guess Obama anticipated it, his, when he was in the White House, his administration. So I just wanted to, I wanted to start by saying that, to thank all of you and to thank the district because, you know, this Berkeley Unified and Berkeley, the city of Berkeley, has long been a place where, you know, where we want to be at the forefront of progressive action. And I really appreciate, actually, Laura Babbitt coming in and talking about the PAC because I think that we do constantly need to be reminded of that. And I think data is very important, and I believe that from conversations I've had with him, that the new superintendent, well, you're not so new, but Superintendent Evans, I mean Stevens, sorry, also feels that data is really important and wants to work to get that, to get there. And I feel like this, I feel like we have consistently had, you know, the commitment. I think, Laura, you talked about like the lip service to equity, and I think that actually, I know that it goes deeper than that. It might not always be successful. And I know that the district and the district leadership is now really thinking a lot about equity and how to serve all of our students, you know, our students with special needs, our special ed kids, our, you know, kids who have less resources. And, you know, and I really appreciate that because in many ways, we are leaving, we're, you know, we're leaving other districts. I learned that, you know, this Zoom issue that came up this last week that really upset a lot of people because, you know, we had done this great learning distance learning plan that was based in large part on Zoom, on Zoom, on students checking in via Zoom. And like the second day, we had a really significant Zoom bomber. I've learned that word, Zoom bomber. And, you know, he was doing things that we, even though parents have said that we, they wouldn't mind if this happened in their kid's classroom, I actually don't believe it because we don't, you know, kids can't, when kids are on a Zoom class, they're like confronted with whoever is on Zoom, and we need to be very careful and very secure about that. So I really want to thank the staff for, you know, the superintendent for recognizing that and making that decision together with me, but making that decision or that recommendation at the very beginning that we cut off the use of Zoom until we've dealt with some of these security issues. And from what I understand, Jay, our Jay Nitch, our technology lead in the district, has been working with Zoom and actually has been working with Zoom in a way that will help many other districts to figure out how to increase the security so that it serves mostly our young children, I mean, all of our kids. But so I just wanted to mention that because I do feel like, you know, there's so many, there are just so many issues that have come up over these last few weeks that we never could have guessed. I mean, they're like, everything needs to be rethought. And so I just, I want to thank those of you who have provided your input. I want to ask you, when you do provide input, if you can, you know, instead of like almost making an assumption that the district has, has like not made a thoughtful decision, try to ask yourself what, you know, what went into making this decision and what do I have to add? And I know that sounds silly, but since I said this at the town hall meeting, we actually have gotten several positive emails from parents. And, you know, I would like to say that it doesn't matter, and people are working really hard. So we want to hear the critiques when they're there, and we want, you know, I want for people to just really, you know, maybe have, maybe come from an inquiry place. Anyway, that is something that I've been thinking a lot about. And again, I would never dissuade anybody from giving their, contacting us as your elected representatives. And it's something that I think can be really frustrating when your kids are involved, to make sure to ask questions and see how you can maybe, what you can do to maybe give input or make it better. I want to echo what I think Director Sinai said about, you know, this need to really come from a place of compassion and caring both with yourself and with your family and the people in your community because this is an unprecedented time that we're all living through. And, you know, and I know that I probably, I think everyone really cares about our community, really care about you, the families, and our, and the people who support, who serve our kids, our staff. And so I wanted to really, I wanted to echo that because it's really important to come from this place of compassion and caring for one another if we're really going to make it through these, what looks like it could be a long time in, you know, with social distancing. Okay, that's all I have to say. Superintendent Stevens, after you swig your beer. I'm just kidding.
You teased me a little too much, President Appel. I want to say good evening to everybody who is currently viewing and who will watch this at some point in the future. This evening, we're going to offer a number of updates to the board and to the community about the district's efforts to respond to COVID-19 and implement the distance learning plan. We've been providing periodic updates to the board and the community nearly at a weekly pace. And so we'll focus just on the last five days of progress that we've realized as a district. Rather than talk about any of those sort of difficult logistical details that we're right now trying to wrestle down, what I thought I would do is just sort of offer my observation on what I observed to be the stance of our school district and particularly our staff. This, I really mean to be a commendation of our teachers, our classified folks, our principals, and everybody who's working so hard to do two things. One is to really stay open-minded to the feedback that we continue to get. All of this feedback is so important to us. None of us, of course, have ever walked this road before. We can't know what it's like to experience distance learning from the perspective of an eight-year-old or a 17-year-old. So please know that we appreciate the feedback. We hope that you'll continue to keep it coming to us and that we are committed to receiving it with an open mind. And I also want to commend everybody, the community, staff, parents, families alike, just for the sheer open-heartedness of the response to COVID-19 over the last month. I continue to be very moved by stories that I'm hearing from the community about families that are newly unemployed or affected by underemployment, by families that are supported by our own staff to find their way into hotel rooms through circumstances of uncertain housing. We're hearing stories about students who are picking up extra shifts to be able to bring income to their families after a loved one has lost employment, and students who are now full-time childcare providers who despite strong marks and strong academic performance, now find that participation in distance learning is made almost impossible by the obligations of being at home with children who are also not in school. So for all of the instances of open-heartedness that we're seeing, both community, all of our volunteers, our donors, and our staff, please know that I'm very thankful and that we continue to feel very humble to be able to work here and serve the community of Berkeley.
Thank you, Superintendent Stevens. So I think that we are now going to move to, to the consent item, the consent calendar. And so, wait, I have to pull up the, the.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you. I guess that's what we are doing. All right. So Liz, can we please call, do a roll call vote?
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Leva Cutler?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
President Appel?
Yes.
Director Hemp?
Director Hemp, I think you're muted.
Director Hemp?
Yeah.
Did you, we were voting on the consent calendar, and I think.
Yeah, sorry, I tried to do my mic, it wasn't going on. I vote yes.
So it sounds like the consent calendar has passed. So now I'm going to turn to our act, to our action items. And the first action item is an update on COVID-19 and the BUSD response. We have an update on BS, BUSD Distance Learning Plan, approval of temporary revision to BP 5121 for student grading, and approval of Resolution 20045 declaring facilities projects as essential governmental functions.
Great, thank you very much, President Appel. I'll be joined by two of my colleagues for these presentations. So I'm joined by Natasha Berry, who is the Director of the Berkeley School Excellence Program and Director of Community Relations. And then John Kalis is the Executive Director of Facilities here in the district. And so we will tag-team our way through both the update to the community and the board about these recent COVID-19-related activities, and then ask for two action items, the approval of temporary revisions to the board policy on student grading, and then a resolution declaring certain construction projects here in the district to be essential. So I'm going to share my screen. This will take just a moment, and I'll pull up the presentation. Great. So I'll begin. So again, Natasha Berry and I will be sort of walking through some of these items together to give the board and the community a sense of where we're going in this presentation. We'll cover these topics this evening. This will include an update about our most recent state and local government responses to COVID-19, talk about student and family support, an update on distance learning itself, an update on BUSD procedures and facilities, volunteer efforts, and then our communications efforts as well. So at this point, I'll invite Ms. Berry to walk us through a number of the stats related to COVID-19 and state and local responses to it.
Thank you, Superintendent Stevens. Good evening, everyone. I'll just go very quickly through this first slide just to set the stage, and because we've been doing this now for just over a month and can see in real time what's happening within our community and connected beyond us to the county of California and to the nation when we first met with you back on March 11th, before we decided, just 24 hours before we decided to close the schools. As you know, there were very few cases locally and not even a lot in the nation. And as you know, this has all grown substantially, although we are in California at least, beginning to see what might be the beginning of flattening the curve, and that gives us some great hope. At the same time, next slide, we are hearing from, I think, we're hearing from our partners in the city of Berkeley how important it is that we continue what we've been doing to make such great progress. So I'm one of the liaisons to our partners in the city and also to the county where we have regular updates, and this is the reminder that they asked me to share with all of you that we need to continue to keep up what we're doing to prevent the spread. And in particular, as families who are eager to get outdoors with our children. And in particular, as families who are eager to get outdoors with our children, particularly with weekend and with the weather improving, we really do still need to limit ourselves significantly, uh, including not going to our beloved playgrounds. Um, we'll mention later on about the closure of those playgrounds. But we do need to continue whether at work or at play, uh, to maintain that distance so that we can limit the spread. We also are uh, looking across our relationships across the counties in the Bay Area to a couple of partnerships. One is our partnership within the educational context. And so with the Alameda County Office of Education and the uh, six Bay Area Offices of Education together, as many of you know jointly, declared on the seventh that we should remain closed for the remainder of the school year. I know that Superintendent Stevens will be speaking to that later this evening as well as next week. That's a guidance that actually goes to a decision that can be made locally. And it's not the same thing as a shelter in place joint agreement, which is also made jointly by County Public Health rather than Offices of Education. And but in the case of the city of Berkeley, um, would be made uh, by the city of Berkeley, should we extend beyond the current May 1st closure. And then statewide, um, we're looking, uh, we're hearing from Governor Newsom, many of you may have tuned in to the press conference that he gave yesterday, talking about the progress that we have made as a state and uh, how hopeful many of us are feeling that we might be able to contemplate opening back up again. Governor Newsom shared that there were at least six conditions that uh, we needed to consider before it was safe to do so. And a couple of those conditions do relate to us in particular within the context of schools. While there are some wider conditions that have to do with being able to monitor, that is spread out testing more widely, preventing infection, treating in hospitals, developing antivirals and other therapeutics. The last um, two bullet points in particular connect to us. The ability for um, schools, childcare facilities and businesses to support physical distancing was called out as one of the preconditions. And obviously, that's easier said than done and something that we as a team will be looking at is uh, what, what that means in this context, we'll be looking for further guidance, both locally and from the state about uh, what that looks like in terms of schools. How can, how could we reopen and yet remain distant? And then um, also what could it be? And that's, this is the last bullet, that there, it could be that we would prepare to open only to close again if there was a resurgence. So we're planning for now and we're also looking for multiple possibilities for the future. Uh, so that's where we are with um, COVID-19. And I'll turn it back over to Superintendent Stevens to talk about where we are at the USD.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Berry. Uh, we've prepared a few statistics just about the last five days of work here in the district and uh, some of what we've been able to accomplish over the last four weeks. Uh, so presented here are some numbers that we think are relevant to be USD service to our larger community. Uh, that includes that we've been able to provide 22,000 meals on a takeout basis to our families. Uh, we're averaging about 5,200 meals per week. Uh, currently, we've been able to distribute 2,500 Chromebooks to families. That's about 25% of our district. Uh, have been able to be in contact and support uh, over 400 families through our Office of Family Engagement and Equity. Many of these families find themselves economically disadvantaged right now. Uh, and so are looking directly to OFI liaison support to find both financial support, educational support and uh, support with things like uh, housing. Uh, our Visual and Performing Arts Department has been busy distributing instruments in two large distribution periods. Uh, they are now up to having distributed 300 musical instruments to our students. The Berkeley uh, Public Schools Fund has now received thirty, three, $385,000 in donations to date uh, and is currently averaging about $10,000 per week uh, in dispersments to families that are in need of financial assistance during this time. Uh, our hats off to every single one of the support providers whose accomplishments are listed here on this slide. Uh, also recently, uh, we have shared with the Berkeley School community that we will move all grading for the second semester for secondary students, grade six through 12, uh, to a pass no pass system. Uh, this is mirrored by many decisions made by institutes of higher ed here in California and across the country. Uh, and then is also in line with guidance provided by the University of California, the California State University System, uh, and many uh, private college associations that they will not look at grades for the semester, uh, but will accept pass no pass grades with no negative consequences for students. Of course, we made uh, global news last week on Tuesday because of a Zoom bombing incident that took place in one of our high school sections. Um, after that, uh, this was a cause for reflection on our part about the ongoing use of online synchronous interactions between teachers and students. We implemented a three day pause on all of those online interactions. Uh, and then have reopened the use of uh, streaming technology, video conferencing technology, beginning on Monday of this week. This time asking our educators to use a platform that's called Google Meet. Um, we are, as it's been mentioned, in direct conversations with engineers at Zoom, trying to solve an issue with something that relates to individual identity authentication. Uh, many of us who are using Zoom in a professional setting are both logged into our Zoom accounts and have access to passwords. Uh, we're trying right now to make sure that our students can also be logged into an account thereby guaranteeing their identity while also getting a password for meetings that are established by their teachers. Uh, this double layer of security, uh, we believe will prevent uh, ongoing issues of Zoom bombing. Uh, and so we're optimistic that we'll have some solution coming from the company in the coming days, perhaps week. Uh, but we're not able to commit to a timeline yet for the restoration of Zoom to our portfolio of video conferencing technologies right now. Uh, we'll learn more very soon. Um, I also want to acknowledge that we're getting feedback from a range of sources, including students, teachers and parents about Google Meet as a platform. Uh, some complaints that the platform, although it does possess certain security features, lacks other features that make it usable for an online learning application. Um, so, so we're aware of that. It's adding a lot of urgency to the work that we're doing with Zoom. Uh, and our ideal is that we would be able to offer several options for educators to use that we can uh, say with all certainty to our community, uh, are safe for our students to be able to use. Uh, last week, April 6th, was the beginning of our distance wide distance learning plan. Though many of our educators, like their colleagues in other cities and other schools, were offering online guidance to teachers rather to students. Uh, we didn't yet have a distance wide learning plan for all of the district. And so across the BUSD, it was only on Monday of last week that began. It's worth noting that last week as well was the end of the third quarter. Uh, we extended the deadline for the submission of late work uh, by a week. Uh, and so many of our teachers at the secondary level actually did not begin to assign new work last week during the week of the sixth through the 10th, uh, because they were collecting outstanding work from students. Uh, we imagine that many families and students will have experienced it on Monday of this week, that new work is being assigned as the fourth quarter starts in earnest. Uh, here we have some very preliminary data about what student participation in distance learning is looking like. Uh, we have cause for alarm here, although the data that I'm presenting right now is very preliminary and very incomplete uh, and really should not be used by anyone to make a conclusion about our success so far. I share it though, because I do think that it's important both to signal to the community that we are paying attention to metrics uh, as we try to institute this new learning plan uh, and that even the preliminary metrics are pointing towards discrepancies in participation based on uh, demographic profiles that are familiar to us. So uh, the district so far has been measuring uh, three indicators of participation in online learning. Uh, that includes the number of online sessions attended by a student. Uh, the rough percentage of work completed, and we have only permitted that teachers report that percentage in quartiles, so 25%, 50%, 75% or all. Uh, and then teacher requests that a particular student be contacted uh, because they haven't uh, reported in for distance learning. So again, this is only five days of data. Last week, we experienced that very significant disruption to Zoom. Uh, and so again, it's another caveat. Over on the right hand side of the slide, you can see that about 18% of our students overall uh, had at least one of those indicators marked by a teacher to suggest that their participation in online learning was was not yet active. Uh, and then you can see a breakdown by a variety of demographic groups, um, including ethnic and racial groups and including uh, key, key demographics like special education, English language learners uh, and SED, socioeconomic disadvantaged. So these numbers obviously give us pause. They're essentially confirming what we thought would be the case about distance learning. And that is that uh, the digital divide will only exacerbate and make worse the kinds of equity gaps that we experience in our brick and mortar operations. Uh, this week as well, we've been very busy on providing supplemental guidance on a number of questions that are coming up. Uh, of course, it was not possible for us to think through all of the potential problems with moving an entire district, all 800 classrooms to a distance learning environment. And so we've been busy responding to problems as they come up, writing guidance and then distributing that guidance. Uh, just in the last five days, we've issued written guidance to teachers to provide to families about the inherent risk of online learning. Uh, that's called the notice of online learning and families should begin to see it soon from teachers. Uh, we also distributed our first set of distance learning activity sets from pre-K all the way up to high school. These were the first sets that were created with a newly established team of teacher leaders. Uh, that team is looking for feedback from their peers so that that work can become stronger. Again, this is the first time that the district has created weekly curriculum for the, for use by teachers. And so this is a new endeavor for us. We also worked over the weekend and special kudos to Jessica Lee, the Digitech team and the Instructional Technology Team uh, to create Google Meet trainings. So as we pressed pause on the use of Zoom, we created a number of training assets and webinars for our teachers. Uh, by early on Monday, we'd had more than 380 teachers log on to view the Google Meet webinar. We've also been offering additional clarification about the role that special education teachers should play in the distance learning plan. Uh, that clarification is coming from questions and concerns that are surfaced by teachers at the special ed teachers as they begin their work. Uh, and then we're also issuing this week written guidance about accommodations for students with five or four plans. Again, another topic that we wouldn't have been able to anticipate fully before the distance plan was enacted. Um, one of the sort of dilemmas that we're experiencing, and this one is tugging at our heartstrings, is that we now know that it's highly unlikely that we will be able to be together physically before the year ends. Uh, this will have a profound impact on a number of end of year ceremonies, uh, including most importantly, um, high school graduation. Uh, the high school administrative team this week uh, distributed a survey to all seniors, uh, asking them to uh, force rank a number of options, uh, given that an in-person graduation would likely not be able to take place. Uh, you can see represented here in the bar chart, uh, how seniors have responded so far. Uh, they still have the rest of the week to respond, will be collecting more data. Uh, but this does say that in the event that it is not possible to be together, that as a second choice, notably a second choice, uh, seniors would like to do some form of virtual graduation, even though folks can't be physically present in the same space. I'm going to talk a little bit about this in just a moment. And here we are. So, so we have been in contact with a number of vendors that are themselves establishing the technology to be able to offer a remote version of graduation and commencement. Uh, we're right now sort of learning more about the technical features of an online commencement. Uh, we recognize that no online commencement could possibly take take the place of an in-person graduation ceremony. We'll report more to the Berkeley community and to students as we learn more about what this might entail. Uh, but please know that we're actively exploring it. And though it's a sort of a poor substitute for an in-person ceremony, uh, we do want to provide our seniors with some um, mark to the end of their careers here in BUSD. I shared previously that that we have moved all of our grading to pass no pass. I'll be asking momentarily for the board's formal adoption of temporary revisions to board policy 5121. Uh, again, this aligns our policy to practices already articulated across the UC system uh, and the guidance provided by UC, CSU and other college organizations about a number of permissible ways that districts can handle the inherent, inherently inequitable conditions that are now uh, taking place because of COVID-19. Uh, we also want to be very clear that no student should be denied the opportunity to graduate on the basis of their second semester grade alone. Uh, we are beginning work to begin to think about summer learning. Uh, we recognize that we're still about two months away from the summertime. Uh, we're thinking about summer in two ways distinctly. Uh, how we might be able to reconvene either in person or remotely, uh, the set of summer learning experiences that we traditionally offer. Uh, those programs are designed specifically to support the learning of students enrolled in special education or who need to go through credit recovery or who are enrolled in our Bears programs. Uh, we're also thinking now largely on the basis of feedback we're getting from parents about how we might be able to expand uh, summer learning opportunities, particularly for vulnerable students. Uh, we plan to report back more on the shape of this plan as we go along. Uh, this is again, work that is new to us. We've been quite taxed just to launch distance learning as it stands right now, but 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 plan to devote resources to contemplating the summer as well. Uh, and then as uh, we don't know what the fall of 2021 will look like. Governor Gavin Newsom's statements yesterday about uh, schools being included among the six criteria uh, that he would use eventually to lift the shelter in place order is very relevant to us. Uh, he's pointing towards schools' capacity uh, to come back into session and institute uh, social distancing conventions. Um, and so we have a lot of work to do to assess our physical spaces, um, to reconceive of the capacity of our school buildings to have a certain number of students in them at once. And then to think about the complicated logistics of having potentially reduced enrollment capacity in our buildings at any given moment of the day. Uh, so it sets the mind to wander. Uh, we will begin to contemplate these prospects as well. Uh, and then think about some probably some form of hybrid model where students may be coming back in part to the physical campus uh, while maintaining certain aspects of our distance learning plan. Uh, so more to come on this very complicated topic about the reopening in the fall. Um, by way of renovations to our procedures, um, we've been working very hard over the last several weeks to convert our in-person and on paper procedures for school enrollment and school registration uh, to an online environment. Uh, just on Friday of last week, April 10th, uh, the enrollment office sent an email to all families who had already enrolled their students uh, for school uh, in the coming year. Uh, those letters, enrollment letters were sent out on March 13th, I believe. Uh, and so typically, uh, when we are able to be in our school buildings, families would go to the school's office in order to register, that is confirm their enrollment. That's no longer possible. And so we're designing an online process for registration. Uh, and then we'll be sending out information shortly to families who wish to enroll a student for the fall of 2020. Uh, this will include corresponding updates to our BUSD enrollment webpages. Uh, we also should note to the, that some submission deadlines we anticipate will be extended. We recognize that for many families, uh, getting in to see a doctor to provide immunization records and other things may be difficult. Uh, so while we don't have permission to waive the submission of documents like that, uh, we'll take every latitude we can to extend the submission deadlines. Uh, in terms of our facilities, um, it's important to remind members of the public that all the USD parks and playgrounds are closed. Uh, we continue to try and reinforce that message with signage uh, and with chains and locks. Uh, we have found that in some instances, uh, chains and locks are being cut. Uh, and we're trying to replace those chains and locks as quickly as we can. But we very much appreciate the community's understanding uh, that it's in keeping with public health orders that those playgrounds remain closed uh, in order to prevent the spread of coronavirus. So we ask that all members of the community, please do your part uh, and stay away from parks and playgrounds. Uh, we also want to note that construction projects taking place in the district continue on right now. Uh, this includes the very important renovation of the West Campus slated to be the home of the Oxford Elementary School community, uh, starting in the fall of 2020. Um, all of our construction crews are required by law to observe social distancing protocols and to be outfitted. and to be outfitted by their contracting organization with the appropriate level of personal protective equipment. In terms of bringing back our own custodial and landscaping crews, we have been somewhat hindered by the lack of available PPE or personal protective equipment on the market right now. Just today, we've been able to find a vendor who can sell us 60,000 surgical masks. We anticipate that those will arrive in the district within about two weeks and given sort of steady use by both employees and potentially students, should we extend into a limited physical environment next fall, that that supply will last us only until about the end of the summer or mid September. One remarkable effort that has launched this week with much credit to the Berkeley Public Schools Fund is something that we're calling Ed Hub. Well, we conceive of this as a three times per week opportunity for families to come to the parking lot that is at the 2020 Bonnar Campus to pick up a number of necessities that will support online learning. This includes technology needs like Chromebooks, computer exchanges, power cables, internet tools and tech support, school supplies, activity kits, learning packets and Spanish speaking support as well. We've piloted this effort this week. What you're seeing is a photo from this week, the actual first iteration of the Ed Hub. And so we'll continue to put out communication to the school community about this opportunity to pick up additional resources for learning. And again, my thanks to all of the volunteers who provided staff hours this week and of the thoughtful and creative people at BPSF who have worked with our staff to launch Ed Hub. In terms of our ongoing efforts to communicate with the Berkeley School community, we hosted our first virtual town hall just last Thursday evening. We are very happy that over 500 participants logged in at one point or another during the course of the town hall. The town hall featured live interactions and written questions and answers, as well as updates from a variety of cabinet level officials about important topics like special education, like distance learning and online access. On April 12th, we created a frequently asked question document that is now posted on our website. And this includes responses to a number of questions that were brought up at the virtual town hall that includes additional information about the distance learning plan rollout, grading, graduations, summer school, IEPs, school registration, facilities, construction and public health, many of the topics that I'm covering in tonight's presentation. For folks who are in need of childcare, the Alameda County Office is organizing childcare for essential workers. And this is the operative word. Childcare right now is only available to folks in industries that have been deemed by the state of California as essential in the COVID-19 response. Online, there are many, many lists of the industries that have been deemed essential. For families who are in need of childcare, we provide this information here in this deck. This information is also widely known by our OFI liaisons and is distributed to our schools. It is the organization Bananas that is providing private childcare to the Berkeley area. And then we've listed here, given a link to the Alameda County referral form. This is a relatively straightforward Google survey that a family can use to be in direct contact with Alameda County and get a referral for childcare. We share again this message about how students and families can acquire a Chromebook loner from BUSD. There are three ways to do that, including email, chromebook@berkeley.net, leaving a message at the phone number 510-644-8931, or filling out an electronic form on our website. That's berkeleyschools.net/connecting. Please know that we are committed to feedback and ongoing improvement. This is a work in progress. Our special acknowledgement to all of our students and families who are living through this pandemic and experiencing the ups and downs of our efforts to create distance learning. Please know that we'll do everything we can to support you and our community. So this evening, we have two requests for action for the Board of Education. One is the approval of a temporary revision to board policy 5121 on student grading. Again, this is to move student grading from a letter grade based system to a pass no pass system for this semester. And then the second item, item 12.2.3 on our agenda is the approval of a resolution that declares our facilities, construction projects as essential government functions during the COVID-19 school closure period. So I will be joined by my colleagues to answer questions from the board, both about this full presentation and then about the the two action items. So why don't I go ahead and give a little bit more context to the action items and then I'll wrap up. So again, the temporary revision to board policy 5121 reads in part like this, BUSD hereby alters its current letter grading base system for students in grades six through 12, effective during the period of COVID-19 school closures and including the fourth quarter of 1920 and the second semester grades for 19 for the 1920 school year. For all classes in these grades, students shall be marked for the fourth quarter and second semester using only a pass no pass system. And then the second of these action items, the approval of resolution 2045 declaring facilities projects as essential governmental functions. The declaration of facilities projects as essential governmental functions by the governing board will authorize the superintendent or designate to take any and all actions necessary to ensure the continuation of public works, construction as appropriate. Declaration of these projects as essential will allow the facilities division to ensure that projects related to the health and safety of the district students and staff remain on schedule. So this is the conclusion of my presentation. I'm going to exit screen sharing mode and welcome questions from the board. Again, I'm joined by John Colley, Executive Director of Facilities and Natasha Berry, our Communications Director.
Okay, so I see Director Sinai's hands up. So why don't you go ahead and point us off?
Thank you. Thanks for a really thorough presentation. I had a question around the slide around nonparticipation of students. I think I just need a clarification. I think it might be one of those double negative issues. There's three indicators of participation, but then the data says one or more indicators of nonparticipation. So does that mean 18% of all students did not participate? Or 18% did participate? I'm confused about what the right hand column.
Yeah, and we're, please know, this is very much a work in progress. In fact, these indicators will be adjusted next week on the basis of feedback we've received from secondary teachers. The 18% refers to the percentage of students who had at least one of those three as as marked that they were not participating. So that's sort of a rough gauge right now after the first week about students who are not currently engaged in in distance learning. But again, this could be any one of those having this sort of negative indicator, meaning that there may be an issue with their participation. That's the 18% right now.
Okay. Yeah, I think it'd be good to think about framing it a little differently in a new because I mean, the indicators are participatory, but yet the data is nonparticipative. So it's just a, I think it just creates a disconnect in my
Yeah, I understand. In fact, I think the next time we report on participation, we'll likely have new indicators altogether on the basis of feedback we're getting from our teachers.
And to add to that, I think that it would actually be more positive and maybe more, and I think gives the same information to instead report on how many do participate instead of don't participate.
Sure. So that number would be about 82%.
Yeah, I get that. Okay, so next I have Director Leva Cutler. And remember to bring your, bring your hand down if you don't have another question.
I will have another question, but so my question is about the student grading and the pass no pass. This is for the middle school and high school. And how, how is it determined that you did not pass and that you passed? What is it so that it will be the same criteria or is it? You know, how is that determined by what you've completed 80%? Are we going to have a way that everybody does it the same way? Or it's up to a teacher to determine what a student did not pass?
Yeah, we're still working this out is the the most honest answer, Director Leva Cutler. We have offered some guidance in the distance learning plan that roughly 60% of work completed would constitute a pass. That's roughly equivalent to what it is in the letter grade system. However, we're getting lots of feedback from teachers about their desire to maintain point systems, their own point systems. We don't intend for this system to override teachers on grading practices. And then we're hearing some feedback about the, some of the unintended consequences of a pass no pass, including perhaps sort of lack of motivating factors for students who might otherwise work harder, but 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 don't in the event that there is only a pass and a no pass option. So while we sort of are establishing the policy for pass no pass because it is the most equitable, many of the sort of finer grained details about how to go about grading or what will constitute a pass are in front of us or may just be left to teachers because these grading practices are typically their purview.
Oh, and does a pass have and no pass have any credit to it? I mean, credits that the students earn with that?
Yeah. So if they get a pass, then that's considered to have passed the class. And so they'll be earning the five credits for the semester course in the way that they normally would.
Okay. And the next, are we going to collect data on the students? And the students who did not get a no pass and pass, are we going to collect that information? I, what I did, what I'm going to is I'm concerned that there'll be students that have not gotten sufficient heads up that where they're headed. And so, you know, before learning about it, two, two weeks before the end of the semester. So especially students who already have been falling behind.
Yes. So so many elements of the current board policy on grading remain intact. We're only changing the letter grade portion of the policy. Our policy specifies that teachers are obligated to inform families of students who are at risk of not passing a class well in advance of the end of the semester. What we're trying to do is pay attention to participation on a week by week basis so that we can use our support staff to reach out to those families and problem solve while using school staff to reach out to kids who are at risk of not passing a class. But it continues to be a teacher's obligation to inform families if there's risk.
So we will collect the data in terms of how many students and which students are the ones that did not pass and
Yes, we will have all that information.
All right. I'll leave my question for the other ones.
I'm going to ask my question because it's a little related to that one. And my question is, I guess I'm a little unclear if you, if the board needs, is just going to pass, you know, the the basic change to 5121, which is, you know, to go from grades from letter grades to pass no pass in the second semester of this year? Or if you want us to actually, you know, if if there's, if you want us to look at and pass the whole, like, you know, the the write-up that's actually in the agenda is pretty clear. So, and I think it's more direct than the memo. So I was wondering if, if, you know, I don't, I haven't researched this, so I don't know if, you know, what our purview is, but it seems like maybe passing, looking at the entire, you know, all the elements that are laid out in that summary in the agenda might be positive for us because like the concerns that Director Leva Cutler was just talking about, those, those are spoken to in that summary. And so I was wondering, you know, if we only pass, if we only, if we only consider the pass no pass issue, then it kind of leaves the rest up to, I don't know, I don't know how, you know, to decide, be decided by whoever makes those decisions internally.
And President Appel, would you like me to, to? It is true that the policy, the grading policy 5121 specifies a large number of elements to the district's directions to instructors about grading. What we're changing is not the entire policy, but the element of the policy that specifies the the letter grade. Other elements of the policy are described both in the board memo and in the attachment. And those are held intact, such as the notice to families that when a student is at risk of not passing the class. So I can certainly share more information about the fuller policy. I have decided just in the presentation to highlight the the significant change to the policy, and that is the the pass no pass element.
So I haven't read the policy recently, but it sounds like you, your belief is that the current policy already covers the kind of situations you talk about in the memo and the the write-up.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call on Vice President Alper and then the Student Director.
Thanks. A question about the synchronous learning and has like two parts. One is, I'm confused about the office hours and I know that it's sort of a work in progress in that it's going to be evolving and that the Zoom thing, you know, interrupted those plans. But assuming that we figure out Zoom, it's not clear to me what the goal is. If it's, if it's three hours, that each student will have three hours with each of their teachers synchronously, if that's the goal. Or if, because I think that a lot of teachers are having smaller groups of students, maybe in smaller chunks of time and but I think parents are confused too. I'm hearing from parents like at the elementary school level is, is, are they, or at, or at middle school, should they be getting, should they be expecting each of their kids, teachers to be live with their kids for three hours a week? I might have said a day before, three hours a week. Or does office hours mean something different than than live teaching? And then this is sort of cheating, but it's related to the live teaching. What, what are your sort of preliminary thoughts about classroom management and and kind of, for lack of a better word, discipline in the, particularly in the elementary school classrooms where you know, kids are not used to sitting in front of a computer and they're little, you know, like seven, eight, nine year old kids who are excited to see their classmates and their teachers and have no experience sort of behaving, you know, appropriately in that setting and how we make sure that that they can continue, you know, to participate, you know, even, and even though they may be being disruptive and how, and whether teachers are getting help in professional development and in that aspect of this remote learning environment.
Yeah, yeah. So very deliberately, we defined office hours as incorporating what we imagine would be a number of practices. We did at the outset because we just had never seen this take place before. We weren't certain what would be best. In fact, you just named one of the sort of challenges that elementary teachers are facing now. So, so we wanted to include as possibilities for teachers, both whole group instruction, live lessons, small group instruction, even individual check-ins as part of what's contemplated as office hours. Some of it might be required for some kids, some of it might be drop in. And as much as I'm hearing reports through a variety of channels, teachers are doing all of those things and more in their own efforts to just find what works. I'm also hearing about lots of teachers who are figuring out what doesn't work, like larger sessions, sessions that are over 20, 30, 40 kids at the high school level and at the elementary level, trying to have all of the class together at once to do something like instruction is turning out for many teachers to be just unworkable. So we're still getting lots of feedback about the best way to do that. And this was perhaps a mistake, but by defining office hours as encompassing a variety of approaches, we wanted to learn from what educators would do once they actually tried this out. We still have the opportunity to sharpen our plan and will continue to stay engaged with our teachers and our principals about better defining the elements of online teaching as we go along. Right now, I'm a little glad that we didn't try to define it a priori because I just don't think we'd know what it would look like. In terms of teachers' professional development, we're rolling out a lot right now, but most of it, in fairness, has just been focused on the technological features of these platforms, literally how do they work? We haven't yet gotten into a lot of what you might call blended learning, professional development. So we're just beginning conversations about introducing teachers to the concept of asynchronous learning, meaning using recordings of teaching as part of a week's lesson plans and then using synchronous learning as a way to support the recordings. We haven't really been able to offer much by way of discipline. We have only beginning to think about rolling out digital citizenship lessons and then thinking as well about social emotional learning lessons being a part of the weekly packages that we're putting together. So with each week, I think we get better. This is only our second week of experience. This is only our second week of experience though, and so with all this feedback, we're, I think we'll get better quickly.
Thanks.
Yep.
All right, next Student Director Estella. I'm sorry, is it Nakahara Kemp?
Kemp, I'll just go by hand, thank you.
Hi Stella.
Yeah, no, so my question was on the slide, it's kind of back to the grading, the whole grading system. On the slide titled grading and graduation, I took a picture so I could reference it. But it says at the very bottom, like it explains pass and no pass. And then the very bottom, it says no student will be denied the opportunity to graduate on the basis of their second semester grade. And so because that was in the slide and because I know that other people are going to be seeing that and thinking that it's, you know, the way, I just wanted to like hardcore clarify and make sure if, if you were to kind of just like not do any work for the rest of the year and you were just like, I'm not going to do this. And then, you know, you, you basically didn't get any points in. Could that or could it not fail you? And that goes as well for also credits that could have been earned during this semester the student didn't have to graduate. Like, I, I will even say, for example, I had to finish my PE credits this semester and I only started two days before quarantine. So I only had grades for two days. But there's just a ton of little things like that. And because I, I, I know that people are going to be referring back to these slides. What would you, you know, say to kind of explain that a bit more? And just kind of some more like concrete things for those two circumstances?
Yeah, I appreciate the questions, thank you. You know, the blanket statement that we don't want to disadvantage any student, meaning deprive a student of graduation from high school on the basis of this semester, holds to most circumstances. We recognize that what's going on right now in many families and for many seniors is simply sort of beyond the pale. However, we also want to say that, you know, it, learning continues to be important. We hope that seniors will stay engaged with their classes for the sake of the value of that learning. And that's, I think, what I would mostly encourage all of our students to do is that while we may be in a pass no pass environment, what your teachers have to offer you, what you have to learn by engaging is still important. You know, for a student who just decides to simply disconnect, but would otherwise earn credits, then likely that student will graduate. Really what we're contemplating is for the student who, under all other circumstances, may have graduated, you know, right on the cusp of the credit requirement, but didn't pass a class. That's really the concern that we have is that we may see a student disadvantaged for a circumstance that is simply beyond their control. I don't know if I've answered your particular questions, except to say what we're really looking out for is the student who's unfairly disadvantaged by these circumstances. And what we want to encourage for all students who can continue to participate is that you continue to do it.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's, oh, Julie, you have another question?
Sorry, I just wanted to follow up on that a little bit. So just in the case that Director Kemp mentioned, if somebody was totally checking out, was totally checking out, the assumption is that that teacher is reaching out to that student, right?
Yes.
It shouldn't be the case where they check out and nobody has made contact with either the student or the student's parent or guardian, or somehow tracking down a way to engage, engage and flag that.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I see that Vice President Alper and Student Director Kemp and Director Brown still have your hands up?
I lowered my hand, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I just did a second ago, I've forgotten to.
Can I raise my hand?
My hand is up because I haven't had the opportunity to ask.
Sorry, Director Brown.
It's okay, no problem. First of all, Superintendent Stevens, thank you for this presentation. Want to talk, of course, about the grading, I have two questions if it's okay to ask. My first question is around the grading policy. And so I could imagine that this will impact individual teacher grading policies in a major way. And so have we considered this impact? And what is the direction from the district providing like alignment purpose? Or was the direction for the, that the district will provide for, for our teachers in an effort to have some alignment around individual grading practices?
We are again trying to clarify these things. You know, California Education Code permits boards of education and the superintendent to establish the system of grading, but generally prohibits the board and the superintendent or administrators from assigning grades. That is exclusively the purview of teachers. So, so we enter into this conversation recognizing that we're sort of on that line. We're setting up the system, but we don't want to dictate the grades. We can provide guidance to teachers about how they might contemplate a pass versus a no pass. And then ultimately need to give latitude to teachers to use the grading systems that they see fit to be able to determine what a pass and no pass should look like for that class. And that's no different than the current circumstances are right now, where teachers themselves will set threshold scores for the assignment of grades. So again, we can consult with our teachers to provide guidance. And we're doing that, and I think we still have additional guidance to issue. But what we don't want to do is get into the business of dictating grades that teachers rightfully should assign on the basis of what they, by way of performance.
Did you have another question, Director Brown?
Yeah, my other question was about digital citizenship. I heard you mention it a little bit. And that's one of my major concerns, especially, you know, being in the, the cyberbullying era and given all this open time and space. I mean, I hope it doesn't happen with our students. But what ways are we preparing our students to be, to embody digital citizenship? And then what is our rollout plan for, for digital citizenship training for our students?
Yeah. So we've had two opportunities now to issue these weekly activity sets. The first of those activity sets was just created by a small team of central office folks working over spring break. Last week, our first group of distance lead, distance learning teacher leaders came together and they put together an activity set that was an improvement. This next week, we're planning to insert a few more items into the activity set. So that includes about three lessons per grade level in digital citizen, digital citizenship, drawing from Common Sense Media as the source is a well-known nonprofit that provides a lot of educational resources related to online bullying. We're also planning then to increase the level of differentiation suggestions in the activity set for students with disabilities or who might have five or four plans. And then we'll begin to include over time additional guidance about support for ELs. So each one of these will be added in time, but this coming week, we hope to add the digital citizenship lessons to our activity sets.
Okay, so I am going to turn to Director Leva Cutler.
Thank you. Shoot, I had a question with that. So can we keep count of how many students have not gone online? Have not, you know, been able to be reached by phone? And so that we can see on a week by week basis that that number is dropping or if that number is increasing of students that are not checked in for a class, not responded to emails or, you know, phone calls. I think it's important to make sure, you know, in every class that, you know, I, I don't know how the, the attendance is being taken or you know that the students have actually gone into that, you know, a link that they were sent, if they completed it or not. So it's just keeping contact with our students to make sure that, and who's not, and, and actually learn who are these students. So if there is a way to do that. And piggybacking on Director Brown's question about digital decision, I had thought that Berkeley librarians, our librarians in our schools were the ones that were responsible for doing the digital learning and citizenship training.
They, they do do that. In fact, it's really been our libraries department that has been at the center of all of our training for digital resources for teachers. It's the, what's known as the Digitech team is part of our libraries department.
Okay, good, that's always, I'm wondering, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Helpful comments. So I have Student Director Kemp, are you, do you have another question?
Sorry, I tried to turn down my hand. No, I don't have more questions, thank you though, thank you so much for the presentation.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, well, I was, okay.
No, you, go, go ahead.
No, go, I mean, you can make a motion.
I was just, just to, I, well, I'll move the, the, what, should we do the grading one first?
Yeah.
I'll move approval of the grading resolution.
So I just want to see what it is because, because there, it's not stated anywhere. So I believe that the resolution is that during the close, during, for this nineteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty year for the final semester, in sixth through twelfth grade, we're going to move from letter grades to pass fail grades. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Pass, pass no pass.
Okay, I'll move that.
It don't say fail because it's pass no pass. Okay, and Director Brown seconded it. Liz, can we have a roll call vote please?
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Leva Cutler?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
President Appel?
Yes. Okay, so that motion passes. So does somebody want to make, there's a second motion?
The facilities.
I'll second that.
All right, so moved by Director Sinai and seconded by Vice President Alper. Can you state what the, what your motion is, Director Sinai?
Sure, I approve Resolution twenty zero four five declaring facilities projects are essential government functions.
Okay, and that's seconded by Vice President Alper, does that do the trick? Direct, Director Kalis?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay.
I want to appreciate Director Kalis's moving virtual background.
It is really, it is kind of cool, so.
I didn't mean moving like emotionally moving, I meant like it's literally moving.
Video instead.
Video, yeah.
It's where I think many of us would rather be, right?
Oh, no.
No, not from the board meeting.
Ms. Cheraz, Cheraz, could you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, Director Sinai?
Absolutely.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Kemp?
Yes.
Director Leva Cutler?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes.
President Appel?
Yes. Okay, so both of our motions passed. I want to thank you again, Superintendent Stevens, for your work in putting together an overview. And I want to thank all of your, all of the, you know, all the folks who you've been working with and the folks in the district who have, I know, put in tons of time to help, you know, get this ready for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then with that said, we're going to move to the next item on the action item. And I'm going to actually turn this over to Vice President Alper. I'm fading fast, and so I'm going to sign off and have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you, President Appel, feel better.
Thank you.
So I'm going to, right before Dr. Stevens, I just want to make a note that there is on the Zoom a question and answer function. But, but because this is not a town hall meeting, the board won't be answering the questions that people are putting into this box. So staff will, I don't know, do, maybe you can just mention that staff will look at them and, and, you know, maybe respond appropriately in some fashion, but that if you, if, if you think that, if you want to, if you have a question, this isn't really the place to ask a question that will get answered. And it's a little bit misleading that we have that up there. But I just didn't want people who put in a question to think that there's going to be some period in the meeting where those questions would get answered. Is that fair, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, that is. We're able to see the questions as they're being input, but because of the conventions of the board meeting, we're not able to respond to them.
And just to say one more thing about that, the, the Brown Act requires us to only discuss things that are on the agenda at the appropriate time that they're on the agenda. So, so we can't legally respond to questions that come up in the middle of the meeting. So just to explain that. So now we're moving to item twelve point two, right?
That's correct.
Go for it.
Okay, thanks. So in this item, I'm also joined again by BSEP Director and, and Community Relations Director Natasha Berry. She wears two very important hats here in the district. Over the course of the last several months, both prior to the school closures and during the school closures, the Berkeley School Excellence Program Policy and Oversight Committee has been meeting to review budget and programming proposals on a variety of expense items for BSEP for the 2021 school year. In this evening's presentation, we'll be asking for a board approval of the budget and program plans for two specific elements of BSEP. That includes the professional development budget and our evaluation budget. That's the BREA department budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Natasha Berry and she will walk us through the presentation. Natasha, let me ask you a technical question, do you want to share your screen or shall I?
I'm happy either way. I, why don't I give it a shot? Let's see if I can, okay, I'll do that, thank you. Okay, I am now going to present. Okay, hopefully you are about to see my screen. Here we go. All right, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but I don't see your screen.
Oh heck, well, I was pleased with that, okay, got show screen. And let's try that again. Show, I hear, I see what happened, here we go. Okay, as well.
There it is.
As well. Okay, good evening, everyone again. And so yes, now wearing my BSEP hat. I'm also going to be joined by, not only by the superintendent, of course, but by associates Superintendent Abajet Tiarra and Suzanne Reed, Coordinator of Professional Development, and Thomas Reinhardt for Program Evaluation or BREA, as we take a look at this most significant component of the BSEP resource. The, we call it high-quality instruction, it's two-thirds of the BSEP measure. The first part of this is the class size reduction component, which this board already has reviewed and approved at its March eleventh meeting. Secondary purposes are under the rubric of support for teaching. So once we've met our class size goals, we have, as Superintendent Stevens mentioned, two primary components that, for expenditures, a professional development budget and a program evaluation budget. And then there's a smaller component which can go to expanded course offerings at our secondary schools and to classroom support. Often, this is a fairly non-controversial budget. In fact, and sometimes we have looked at this, just passed it on consent, because it does go through a considerable evaluation by the BSEP Planning and Oversight Committee. That committee, by the way, you'll be hearing about a little later this evening. It's now going to be called just the Planning and Oversight Committee because it's now taking on the new Resource Bara, the Berkeley Educators Recruitment and Retention Act. But at this point, in March, we were still the BSEP Committee. And what got passed was this budget of over twenty million dollars. So of the entire resource for BSEP, which is currently over thirty million dollars, two-thirds, twenty million, goes to class size reduction and related purposes. And I'm going to take you through the concerns that were expressed by the Planning and Oversight Committee even pre-COVID about where this budget is headed. And I think, given some of the statements that were made, for example, in PTA Council about the concerns about the potential recession that we're headed into, we do want to be sure that the board considers and perhaps reconsiders some of the decisions made earlier through the planning and oversight process. The initial process takes a look first at what it costs to achieve our goals of class size reduction. And so you can see here that from the twenty million dollars, the teacher compensation and related costs take up about fifteen million dollars for next year's projected budget, leaving us just over five million dollars to expend to related purposes. And you'll see that in this budget, what was proposed was a suite of expenditures that actually totaled more than that five million dollars, that totaled, if you see the total expense of over six million dollars, began to do some deficit spending. And that we were able to because we had a significant fund balance. I know the board members are aware that we are now heading into the fourth year of an eight-year measure with having accumulated a substantial fund balance. And that was planned for, under the prior BSEP measure we had, which was a ten-year measure. Towards the end of the measure, we had run into a situation where so many things had been added to the BSEP purposes that we were unable to when there was an economic downturn and when there were decreases. that we were unable to, when there was an economic downturn and when there were decreased COLAs related to BSEP, unable to maintain some of those costs. So we purposely front-loaded this and did end up with over $4 million in a beginning fund balance. And there was a concern that we not hold on to those funds for too long, that we expend those for the purposes for which they were intended. And so that's the budget that you're looking at here. That's a, taking that over $4 million fund balance and expending it in planned and purposeful ways, drawing upon it to the tune of over $800,000 to reduce that fund balance. So that all sounds fine, and part of what we did in order to do that was made some adjustments initially to the way that we plan for the class size reduction cost. I'm not going to belabor this, but I just wanted to be in the public record, that the way that we calculate our class size reduction template, the way that we figure out how much it's going to cost to reduce our class sizes for BSEP to pay for the additional teachers, is through calculations that include how much the general fund is going to contribute towards a certain number of students to provide classroom FTE, and how much BSEP, or in this case Measure E1, is going to contribute. We decided to make an adjustment, given the substantial fund balance, to take what had been a prior contribution from the general fund of 34 to 1 to reduce class sizes. We changed it to 36 to 1. That was a way to relieve the general fund, and as you know, there's substantial concern about where the general fund is headed long-term. And so this was a simple way to take funds from BSEP, still meet the class sizes that we wanted to achieve, and yet cost, cost less for, for BSEP, for the general fund. So doing that, oops, I think I went too far. Doing that, we ended up having, bringing over a million dollars extra to BSEP, to the general fund from BSEP. And again, seemed like a good idea at the time, although there was some concern from the Planning and Oversight Committee about what this looked like over time, and I'm sure the board shares this concern. So what I'm showing you now is the multi-year projection for the BSEP High Quality Instruction Fund. Again, that's the one that pays for class size reduction and the related purposes of support for teaching. And what I, we've done here is we've taken the year that we're in now, which is the third year of an eight-year measure, and we're looking at the fourth year of the measure, and then out two more years. And what we did was we took, so for this current year, the third year, we had a significant COLA. The COLA for BSEP is based on the Bay Area cost, the CPI, Consumer Price Index, not based on the state COLA, the way the general fund is, and there was a significant COLA, 4.5% this year, that really bolstered the funds. Going into next year, that went down largely driven actually by lower cash prices. So that BSEP COLA for this coming year means that, and that's what is applied to the tax bills that we, we pay in Berkeley, is only 2.5%. We decided to do a worst-case scenario, which has happened in the past, which is what if the COLAs go to zero? And at the time that we devised this scenario in February, it seemed like a hypothetical. Now it seems like something that may indeed come to pass. So with a zero COLA and with other factors built in, step in column for the teachers indirect costs which BSEP provides in support of the general fund that we play out there, the revenues do not increase. However, our expenditure budget does increase, and here you see that same $830,000 that was deficit spending for the projected next year that gets compounded over time. And what you want to look at down here is where we are by year six of the eight-year measure, and by year six of the eight-year measure, we are drawing upon the fund, fund balance by over 1.2 million, and we've only got 900,000. So if all of these factors were to happen, and again, and this doesn't include, by the way, additional potential salary increases after the ones that have been negotiated, that, that's where we would be. We would be in a situation where if revenues did not increase and if expenditures did not decrease, we could be in a similar situation as we were with BSEP Measure A. So that is of concern, but again, BSEP, unlike other, some budgets, is made, the decisions are made a year at a time, and we do have an opportunity to reduce expenditures if need be. So that's where we want to go next, is to look at, oops, is to look at where, where we might possibly want to reduce those expenditures. Sorry, I got out of, I got out of projection mode there.
You're still there.
Okay, good. Thank you. So looking, what I wanted to share with the board here is the various components of the, this fund, so that you could see where we've made adjustments over time, where we've made some increases and some decreases, so that as the board considers whether to pass the budget as is, you can see where there are elements that some adjustments have been made and where you could adjust back in another direction. So this is just a three-year snapshot for professional development, which is the largest budget, and wanted to show you here, just for comparison sakes, what's changed over time recently. Some things have remained the same, like professional development coordinator. Some things have increased, but many of those increases are not necessarily new positions. They are simply, in many cases, as I think the board will recall, changes that were made, for the most part, to alleviate pressures on the general fund. So as the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee has done its work over the last few years, when we've had to make budget cuts of 1.8 and $2 million, we looked frequently to BSEP to alleviate those budget reductions of the general fund where it was possible to align with the purposes of BSEP. So that's where the Berkeley High Teacher Leaders, for example, came in, where it went from 2.4 to 4.4 for BSEP. It's not an increase in staffing, it's an increase where BSEP came in. There have been other things that have been decreased, like the tech TSA K8, that went out of the BSEP budget, and in fact, we don't have it in the budget currently. And ironically, we're now in a position where we might really be able to use some more tech TSA. And then we have middle school LIT coaches, which were increased, but that was simply a change in funding. And I'm going to show you a summary side at the very end, but I just want to give you the takeaway, which is that over time, the, we've added FTE to BSEP, not necessarily to our staffing overall, but to BSEP. So over the past two years, and we've also slightly increased the amount for programs, not a whole lot, but some, for professional development. Same goes for program evaluation. So Program Evaluation or BREA, the Berkeley Research and Evaluation, Research Evaluation and Assessment Budget, as you may recall, had a significant cut, actually, the year before this slide begins, 2017, 18, where the director position was taken out of BSEP in order to make room for other things for BSEP to absorb from the general fund. So we ended up putting in a coordinator position at .4 funded by BSEP, and there were some additional adjustments that were made. The most significant one that's proposed for next year, you'll see in a moment, was, is a proposed adjustment to contracted systems. And then we have, we, this forgotten little corner of BSEP sometimes, which is the expanded course offerings. Those are the before and after-school programs. That's remained stable. A certain allocation in FTE is given to Berkeley High and to the middle schools. And then we have a sort of a catch-all category called classroom support, and that one has seen also some significant additions. You'll see that we went from 2018, 19, where there were just a few FTE, under three FTE in classroom support allocated to the BSEP costs, we're up at a proposed 14 FTE. So that's significant. And here's a summary. So Superintendent Stevens asked me to try and put together something that would give you sort of a snapshot of what was new, in case you have some concerns about our worst-case scenario of the, the funds being able to support long-term what's being proposed. So in summary, what's been added to this resource for next year is first of all, that very largest adjustment, which was amounts to over $1 million for relief to the general fund, where BSEP takes on more of the cost of class size reduction. Again, it does not change class sizes, it's just the relative relationship between BSEP and the general fund in assuming that cost. And then we added in to classroom support five FTE, so that's a significant cost for new support in special ed, or as it's described in the program, it's described as a support for students with disabilities. That is something that was needed for our caseloads, and general fund couldn't take it on, and it's within the scope of BSEP, so that, that is new. But I didn't color it the way I colored 504 Coordinator, because I decided to use green for the things where it does seem like there are some options, and yellow for the ones where it didn't seem there were so many options. So 504 Coordinator is a new idea and one that, one of our Ed Services folks can speak to, but that is a new concept and something that BSEP would, would be paying for. The next two, Student Activities Director, that is a TSA position, and Dean of Attendants, both of those at Berkeley High were intended as relief of the general fund. They had been in the general fund, both of them. Dean of Attendants came out of the general fund last year and was funded through BSEP Measure A carryover, which has now been expended, so the proposal was to maintain it through the BSEP E1. So those are the classroom support and CSR. There are a few things added into professional development. Again, not necessarily new positions, so that .4 Science TSA is not a new position. It just had a different funding stream at one point, which we no longer have. The 1.0 Math Coach has been BSEP-funded. We swapped it out of another BSEP resource called Student Support in order to make room for BSEP to take on more literacy coach support in a, in a swap that we were doing with the LCAP funds. That was rather complicated, but it's not a new position. And ditto for the Middle School Literacy Coach, not a new position. It's, our literacy coaches for our middle schools are co-funded, and again, this is something that BSEP took on. New, entirely new proposals are 50,000 under the rubric of social-emotional learning, particularly aimed at support at the secondary level for anti-bullying and sexual harassment work, cultural responsive lab classroom, which is, is new. And then within BREA, there was a proposal brought by the Superintendent to increase expenditures there to take a look, external look through contracts at some of our programs, do some evaluation, such as for the U9 and for our RTI investments. And then last but not least, there was something that actually is not in the summary that the board has tonight, but was reviewed when Associate Superintendent Tiara brought this to PNO just last night, a last-minute proposal to add in .1 FTE through BREA funds to reinstate a multifunded position, the Director of Special Projects and Programs, and given that position's roles with the SIPSA's, with the single plans, which are a significant component of that, that job, and in alignment with BREA work, the proposal was made to add 22,000. So all in total, what we're looking at just for this year, just for this resource within BSEP, is adding about 2.5 million. However, of that 2.5, only about 250, about 10% is truly new, those things that are highlighted in green. So I will just summarize by saying that takes us back to this multi-year projection, which, you know, if, if you, if, for example, the board were concerned about that $250,000 worth and that were eliminated from this budget, you would have that savings in the first year and then carried out into, you know, compounded in, in future years, but there might still need to be additional reductions. There might also be a scenario in which you don't have to make those cuts when we do, if we have better revenues, but we did want to, Superintendent Stevens wanted to be sure that you saw the big picture before you voted on the budget. So that is where we are.
Thank you, Director Berry. Dr. Stevens, what's the time that we allocated for this item?
You know, I'm actually not certain, Vice President Alper, I don't know that. I can check.
There's no, is there any more presentation on this item?
No, there's not.
Okay, so let's, let's say we'll go till 9:30, but not pass that. Does that sound good?
Yes.
So let me go, can you unshare your screen, Director Berry?
Yes, I can.
So board members, if you have, raise your hand if you want to make a comment or a question. Well, I don't see anybody. So, oh, yeah, Director Sinai?
Quick question. What are culturally responsive labs?
I'm going to ask, I believe our PD Coordinator Suzanne Reed is on as a panelist, and I think she can speak to that unless someone else wants to.
Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Evening. Thanks for being here.
Happy to be here. I'm here all day. So culturally responsive lab classrooms are an idea building on what we already currently do with our model classrooms for K8 and our peer learning labs. We have going in the middle school, especially for literacy, and for K5, we have them for math. And it's the idea of bringing together culturally responsive practices and our content areas together to showcase teachers who are really reaching students and really making sure that they're meeting students' needs in the classroom with culturally responsive pedagogy. The idea for next year is to build a team of teachers who have an interest in this and want to open up their practice, open up their classrooms for other teachers to come and explore growing their own practice in culturally responsive teaching within the content areas, and hopefully grow from year to year, so we have more teachers using pedagogical strategies that can reach, you know, our most disenfranchised students.
Great, thank you. And one other question in relation to the BREA budget, and this could be either for Natasha or Dr. Stevens, is $60,000 for external evaluation is not very much money. It doesn't get you much evaluation. So I'm wondering how that fits with the overall budget with BREA? And are we, are we fully funding BREA, or is this in place of doing something else?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. So the $60,000 addition would bring the total contracting budget in BREA up to $120,000. So it doubles. It is still, by program evaluation standards, relatively modest. I do think, though, that it would help us get some professional support to select a program or two, and there are a number that I have in mind that we ought to begin to collect some serious program evaluation data about. So our investment in U9, as an example, comes to mind. Our investment in our RTI teachers, our literacy coaches, is another investment that comes to mind. And I do think that with that additional budget, it's feasible to think about a professional partnership to evaluate the services we provide in those areas. To answer your second, sorry?
What I'm trying to understand is, so right now, and I see that the BREA Coordinator is on, what other staff do we have in BREA, and is it just the coordinator and then these contractors? Or is there actually a budget in, in BREA? Because I knew we used to have four people at different FTEs. So I'm just having a hard time understanding where this fits with the overall BREA budget, because I don't know what the overall BREA budget is anymore.
Sure. Actually, so the BREA budget remains unchanged, with the exception of this addition of $60,000. We have a number of empty positions this year, as there was a lot of turnover, but we're looking to rehire those positions. It would rebuild a team of four, including the coordinator. The $60,000 gives us some more contracting ability.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Oh, Director Leva Cutler?
So in looking at, in terms of the beginning fund balance that was from last year, do we anticipate any savings in the, in the BSEP funding for this year to next year? Is there anything, like, for instance, the ECHO classes, are they being conducted, or is there anything, any place in our funding and our budget that will, we anticipate that we might have a savings?
I'm not certain that I can answer that question, and Ms. Berry, are you able to?
Well, really, the only savings, you know, as you mentioned, we have we have unfilled positions in the Evaluation Department. But for other positions, you know, we still, any FTE that's filled is filled. So there aren't any, and we have contracts in such as Luminate that continues to go forward. So no, I don't anticipate any significant savings other than the unfilled positions for this year.
Dr. Stevens and Director Sinai and Director Lavercutler, if you're still, if you still have your hands raised, are we going to have a presentation tonight about budget projections if the COLA drops further from the state?
Yes, we will. That's the coming presentation.
Okay. If we, if we, well, I'll just say that the motion I'm going to make is to approve, is to approve the recommendation without the $250,000 of additional new expenditures that Director Berry mentioned. And I don't know where, you know, my colleagues are on that, but if that's what we did, and in May or June when we were doing the budget, it became apparent that the budget outlook wasn't as bleak as it seems, it seems like it very well be. Would we be able to add some or all of those expenditures back in at that point?
You know, I think if I could just say one thing about that. For, although I called out the $250,000, they're not all created equal. Some of them are contracts that probably could be added in late. The 504 Coordinator, however, is a position, so that could be problematic. If you were to wait on that, at least that would be my first thought about that, Dr. Stevens.
I would respond in exactly that way.
So from an HR perspective, it might be difficult.
And I would, I would say that, you know, I think the 504 position is very important. Perhaps the other ones that we could wait on those and bring it back in May.
Okay, well, I'll just say sort of, what it's worth, my view is that we should essentially have a hiring freeze in the district, and that's what so many other institutions are doing right now. And that to, that the prospect of a zero COLA from the state is, or something lower than the 2-point-whatever percent we're expecting, is so likely that we're going to have to cut, we may have to cut millions of dollars. We may have to, you know, look at a fiscal emergency, you know, for next year, right? I mean, I guess we're about to have the presentation about it. And so to, all these positions are important, but we're going to have to cut, we're going to have to make significant cuts. So it just, I can't support adding new positions. So for me, it's the 504 Coordinator is the one that I wouldn't, I don't support any of them right now, but I wouldn't support that one. That would be the first one that I wouldn't support because of, because it's a new, ongoing position that I don't think we should be creating at this point, given what looks like, you know, really dire circumstances financially going forward, so.
Vice President Alper, I wonder if I could ask you a question, how you might feel if we were to proceed with posting the position with the understanding that the funding for the position had not yet been improved? That would enable us to sound out the market for the position, but not make a funding commitment yet.
I don't know. I guess I'd want Mr. Tobias Espinoza's opinion about that. That seems like a weird thing to do, but is that, is that done?
It is done occasionally. It's not best practice, but it is done. And it is something that we could try to just see what candidates are out there so that we can see what it would look like. Yeah.
I mean, I guess my opinion, but I'm just one Board member, is even if I imagined whoever the ideal candidate is for that position, and I agree with you, Director Lavercutler, I think that's something we've really desperately needed. I still wouldn't support it. So I guess for me, that wouldn't help, but maybe, maybe for my colleagues, it would. Maybe just to move this along, I'll make that motion and see what, if there's any support for it, and if not, someone can make a different motion. So I'm going to move to approve, are we doing both at the same time, or we should do one at a time, Ms. Berry?
One at a time. One at a time.
One at a time.
Okay, so I'll move the, sorry, I've lost track of what it, the two, professional development.
Oh, is that your question? I'm sorry. It is, it is a package, actually.
Oh, it is a package. All right. So I'm going to move approval of the recommendation without the line items that were in green that totaled $250,000. So does anyone want a second there? Director Sinai has her arms crossed. That's like the opposite.
They've been crossed all night.
I won't take it personally. Okay, and is there no second for that? All right, does someone else want to make a different motion?
So.
So Ms. Tiara, that motion failed for lack of a second. Go ahead, Director.
Got it.
So my hand, my hand is up because actually I wanted Dr. Stevens or Associate Su, Tiara, to talk a little bit about the role of the 504 Coordinator, because I agree with you, Vice President Alper, that I overwhelmingly do not want to support new positions right now, but at the same time, I think the, in the ongoing costs of our special ed and our 504 program, due to the lack of oversight and coordination, it could actually, in the long run, save us money versus cost us money. So I don't know if that's an accurate projection. So I kind of would like to know, Dr. Stevens, because I would be happy to do a, you know, a motion that said support it with the inclusion of that position and not the other, not the other green ones.
Yeah, I can speak to this one, because I was sort of personally involved with the high school admin team in thinking about the value of the 504 Coordinator position. So it was just last month prior to the school closures that Berkeley High School exceeded 400 504 plans across the student body. So that's roughly about 12% of the students at the school have a 504 plan. There's currently no administrative function that oversees both eligibility decisions and then follow-up on 504 plans. There's also no training function associated with that. 504 plans are currently managed by the counselors at the high school. Each one of them approaches 504 management in very different ways. So the role is really meant to calibrate both the eligibility process, the creation of 504 plans, and training for teachers to implement those plans, and then broadly oversight for the implementation of those plans.
Do you want to make that motion? Oh, go ahead.
I just had a question in terms of could, could this position be just for one year so that we can evaluate its value to the district versus, you know, an ongoing position that we evaluate this in terms of, was it effective to have the 504 Coordinator? I think it's a coordinator position. Is it?
Well, we can always, we can always cut it.
We always have that option of evaluating and changing our mind. I don't know that we would post it in that way.
We're just one year.
So I would go ahead and move it with the inclusion of that, that one new expenditure. Again, with the caveat that if, you know, if the budget goes all haywire, we have options to, you know, make other decisions. But if you don't put it in now, I think it's hard to insert it later.
And especially now is when we definitely need it.
Okay, so Director Sinai, your motion is to approve the recommendation without any of the green light items except for the 504 Coordinator, which?
With, with an understanding that we will evaluate the effectiveness of the program?
Yep, I would second that.
I'll second.
Director Lavercutler says, a motion by Director Sinai, second by Director Lavercutler. Ms. Tiara's.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Hemp?
Yes.
Director Lavercutler?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
No. All right, that motion passes three to, four to one. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Berry. Director Berry.
Thank you.
And now we'll move to item 12.
Sorry, Director, Vice President, do you document President Appel's absence in the?
Thank you. President Appel was absent for that vote, Ms. Tiara's.
Yeah.
Four to one, four to one.
Noted.
What?
Noted. She noted it.
Oh, okay. Item 12.3. Dr. Stevens?
Yes, so this is a presentation on recommendations for the reduction of the general fund budget, and then also an update on current conversations related to reductions to the LCAP budget. I'm bringing a request for action by the Board only related to the general funds tonight. All the information I'll provide about the LCAP is meant as an update, but I have no request for action at this time. So I'll take just a moment to share my screen and go through a brief presentation about the budget. And then as I go through this, please know that I'm joined this evening by Pauline Fowlesby, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, Bajie Tiara, the Associate Superintendent for Ed Services. Both can be available to answer questions about any aspect of this presentation. So again, tonight, what we're hoping to do is share, as best as we can tell right now, the known expenses and possible savings or new revenue associated with COVID-19 school closures. We'll be asking the Board for approval of $514,000 in transfers from the general fund to other revenue sources for the 2021 school year, and then bring the Board up to speed on conversations related to necessary reductions to our LCAP budget. That's our supplemental budget to support unduplicated students.
Dr. Stevens, let's, let's do a time, how much time do you think the presentation will be?
If I could have, I imagine I'll probably need 20 minutes.
Okay, so 20 minutes. So let's try to be done with this a little after 10.
Perfect.
Questions, okay.
If I can. This is just a reminder to the community that we had presented a budget calendar previously. That calendar has always contemplated that we would make budget reductions to our LCAP budget sometime in April, that we wouldn't approve our LCAP plan until later in June. But of course, we've been now interrupted by school closures, and so we've lost a portion of our planning calendar. This presents some disruptions to the continuity of the conversations we've had. We have been trying to keep track of expenses as they relate to COVID-19. We've listed here some of the expenses that we now know. The district may incur, that includes overtime for cleaning, a differential for many of our bargaining partners, estimated in the first month to cost about $5,600. BFT teacher leader stipends, we estimate to cost about $100,000 over the course of about three months. And then we plan for the replacement of lost Chromebooks. We've distributed about 2,500 Chromebooks right now. We anticipate potentially $164,000 in revenue from SB 117. And then it may be the case as well that a federal CARES grant would give us approximately $500,000. This is pending a grant application, and there's still many elements of this revenue source that are unknown to us. In terms of the LCAP specifically, we may realize some savings because of aspects of LCAP programming that can't continue during school closures. That includes summer programming for avid teachers, the extended day tutoring that teachers often offer, their students cannot continue Super Science Saturdays, elements of the program for attracting and retaining teachers of color, and BPACT, which is our Classified Employee Pipeline. Some indirect costs, all of that together totals potentially $95,000 in savings due to unspent funds in LCAP. This long quote is from Keely Bosler, who's the Director of the Department of Finance. This is a relatively stiff warning that she issued just on Friday of last week about the prospects of an impending recession here in California. It's very right to be cautious at this moment. For the Board's benefit and for members of the public, we have gone ahead and created some multi-year projections that estimate the impact of further reductions to our COLA. When I say further, I mean we've already experienced a reduction in anticipated revenue due to the Governor's January budget that went from 3% to 2.29%. In these projections, we go from 2.29% down to an even lower COLA estimate. This particular slide shows a 1% reduction in COLA being equal in the bottom left-hand corner to $810,000 in lost anticipated revenue for our base budget and $51,000 in lost revenue for LCAP. That's carried forward into the 21, 22 school year for a total revenue loss of about $1,758,000. If we were to think even more pessimistically about COLA for the coming year, a 2% reduction in our COLA would have a net impact of $1,600,000 on our base budget next year, $100,000 on our supplemental budget, and over two years could mean lost revenue totaling $3,495,000. And then in what might be a doomsday scenario, if we were zero COLA, that's an estimated impact of $1.8 million this coming school year, hit to the LCAP of $117,000, and a total estimated revenue loss of $4,355,000 over the course of only a two-year span of time. The implications here, I think generally, they were noted by Board members in the last conversation about BSEP, that this is a period where we should be exercising a great deal of caution. And this is causing me to think about the list of new expenses that we had proposed in earlier presentations to the Board that we shared in committee settings. It's about $1.3 million in revenue that we were looking for to be able to expand a variety of support services, including the African-American Success Project responses to sexual harassment education and prevention, English learners, the 504 Coordinator, which the Board just voted to approve, long, potentially long-fellowed middle school support and human resources support. So again, these are all sort of questions that we rightfully should be wrestling with as we contemplate the budget. So I ask myself this question. I know Board members are also wrestling with this sort of, what should we approve and what should we hold back on? And is it best just to sort of sit and be patient with budget decisions until we learn more from the Governor in his May revise? So with respect to the general fund, the last time we were together to discuss the general fund was March 11. At that meeting, I proposed $1,518,000 in reductions to the general fund. Those reductions were made up of three components. One, a $900,000 reduction essentially achieved through efficiencies and some modest cuts. The Board approved that action back on March 11. The Board approved, rather postponed decisions on recommended shifts in revenue from the general fund to other revenue sources. And then the Board approved the addition of an investigator position in our Title IX/District Compliance Office. Today, I'm bringing back that recommendation to shift funding from the general fund to other revenue sources with one important modification, and that is that a middle school literacy coach, which I previously proposed to put into the LCAP budget, would, in this scenario, stay in the general fund, so not be cut, but remain funded through the general fund. So I'm now recommending shifts to the Board of Education for a total of $514,000. That's different from March's recommendation of $617,000. To walk through these shifts very specifically, they would include moving the Berkeley High School Activity Director to BSEP. Again, I'm eliminating my recommendation to shift a literacy coach from the general fund into LCAP that is removed from my recommendation. It includes moving District Induction Coach over to the new Berkeley Educator Recruitment and Retention Act funding, $34,000. I would propose moving $50,000 from the general fund over to BARA for our Peer Assistance and Review, our BPAR program. It includes a shift from the general fund over to BSEP for BREA evaluation. And this specifically, given that this was just approved, this would be $60,000 from BREA for the evaluation of our dyslexia work next year. And then finally, a shift from, sorry, paying for the BHS, the Berkeley High School Dean of Attendants, from BSEP. And then last, $150,000 shift from the general fund. This would take place moving to District Security Officer positions from the general fund to our new maintenance tax. That's a total of $514,000 in total. Here, you've got a representation, again, of those shifts. So my requested action of the Board this evening is to accept the adjustments to the general fund that are listed in the Board memorandum and this item, and that is specifically. And that is specifically a shift from the general fund to other revenue sources of $514,000. I'm going to continue with my presentation to talk about LCAP. I'll continue to move relatively quickly. LCAP is, LCAP budget or supplemental budget is experiencing a number of pressures. That includes these items. I'll walk through these items one at a time. So first, the LCAP budget is experiencing pressure due to increases in staffing costs. These are typical increases that include step and column and planned increased contributions to STRS. And then the 2.5% increase that the board approved back in October. In total, this is $319,000 that the budget will grow in this 2021 school year. We're also simultaneously experiencing a decline in our unduplicated student count here in Berkeley. For next year, we, rather for this year, there are 255 less unduplicated students. This translates to a reduction in revenue in 1920. That's a reduction of $55,000. In 2021, next year, a reduction of 319,000. Next year, that will have climbed to $517,000. These are sort of compounding figures each year is, each year's loss is added to the next. We do have some positions on LCAP carryover, and this creates another dilemma that we must resolve. Currently, there's $110,000 sitting on carryover, one-time funding in LCAP. And again, as an important caveat, we simply don't know the impact on our LCAP budget of decisions made at the state level that may impact public school revenue. So in summary, when we total up all those pressure points, again, the lower than anticipated COLA, the increase in staffing costs, the decrease in unduplicated student costs are one-time carryover. And then, you know, no, no listing for the unknown impact of COVID-19. We have a total reduction target in our LCAP budget of $492,000. That represents almost 10% of our total spending on supplemental services for unduplicated students. So my current, sorry, just to reiterate, we have experienced some interruption in our ability to engage some of our parent partner committees in these discussions. We had planned to engage our parent advisory committee and District English Language Advisory Committee in March. That gray square represents disruption due to the COVID-19 closure. We did engage both of the parent committees on the 13th and 14th just earlier this week and solicited feedback from them on ideas related to this reduction. So my current thinking is incomplete, but I wanted to bring the board up to speed about how we might close this $492,000 gap in LCAP. I am contemplating proposing to the board for action in a coming board meeting, the use of $250,000 in carryover. Currently, we have $579,000 available to us in carryover, all associated with the LCAP. So I would propose to use roughly half of that to to close this gap. I might then propose that there be a $20,000 reduction in the extended day academic after-school intervention. This is the after-school tutoring that teachers provide students funded through the LCAP. That current budget is $100,000. We have been spending about $80,000 each year. So this reduction would only bring it to the actual program expense and end a little bit of over-budgeting. And then I would propose to move some additional sort of expenses from LCAP to BARA, the attract and retain teachers of color, and then the classified employee pathways. So these are sort of additional costs as well. That would bring the total reduction to $346,000, which would leave about $146,000 still to be identified in terms of cuts. Again, I don't feel prepared on the basis of feedback we've received so far to make recommendations to the board, but this is an update as to where we are currently. So again, I would welcome conversations about the LCAP budget, and then I ask for a board decision on the funding shift related to the general fund. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. And I think what I'd like to do is first see if there's any questions or comments on the budget reductions, transfers from the general fund, and then and then move to LCAP. If that's okay with everybody. So are there any questions about the first part of Dr. Stevens' presentation? Director Sinai.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. I'm trying to remember in my brain Natasha's chart for BSEP that we just did compared to the chart that we've got on the summary for the general fund proposals. The I can't remember what was green and yellow of what we just approved in the BSEP. But I know we did the 504, but was the dean of attendance part of the green or the yellow in what we just did on the BSEP budget? I don't know if we can toggle between the two, or if Natasha knows off the top of her head.
Because she I'm surprised Miss Berry knows, and I think the answer is that it's part of a separate budget.
It was not green. I used green only for things that were new, and so the dean of attendance was yellow. It was one of the positions that was moved into BSEP to alleviate the general fund.
Okay, and then the money that we approved for the the 120,000, the proposed addition that we approved, that was for the sexual harassment?
That's correct. Yeah, that's the addition of an investigator position with the Title IX Office.
So largely as far as this proposal is that there's the 50,000 that was just in the BSEP budget for bullying and sexual harassment, which is on top of this 120, or part of the 120?
Those are two different, two different expenditures.
Okay, that part, wasn't that green? The bullying?
Yes, that was green.
That was green. So we didn't, we did not approve that, Director Sinai.
Did not approve that, and it's different than this 120,000 for sexual harassment. Because this is the Title IX.
That was what we approved a few meetings ago.
Right. I'm just trying to, we just dealt with like two different budgets with some similar language. So I'm just trying to make sure.
Those are two different things. The $112,000 approved previously, that's the addition of an investigator position with the Title IX Office.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So there's no new, in this proposal right now, there's no new expenditures?
That's correct. This is entirely a reduction of the general fund by transfers to other revenue sources.
Okay, Student Director Hem.
Hi, um, thank you, Dr. Stevens and Director Berry for the presentation. I actually, Director Sinai asked the exact question that I was going to ask. But just super quick, just for my, my own understanding, these, the lists of the expenditures that were on the, the not approved list, we're moving those over to a different body of money, pretty much. We're not like selecting which ones we've approved yet, right? We're not approving anything yet.
I'll try to, it is, it is somewhat confusing because we're talking about two different budgets, and some items are appearing in both budgets. In part of what I just covered is our items that were in the general fund this current year that we're proposing to move to the BSEP fund. And so that you're seeing them show up in both of these presentations. The board decided not to approve some new expenses. These are brand new. They haven't been in any fund before, but they're brand new efforts. So I'm hoping I'm, you know, sort of distinguishing between these, these two expenses. One, our fund transfers, and the other are new expenses.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And those were the ones that were in green, the new ones that we haven't approved yet.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Director Brown.
If there weren't any more questions, I was going to make a motion on this.
Please.
Okay, so I'll move to accept the adjustments to the general fund from the shifts. Superintendent.
A second. All right, Ms. Chires.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Hem?
Yes.
Director Leva Cutler?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes, and President Appel is absent, so the motion passes five to zero to one. Okay, thank you. So now let's move to the LCAP part of it. Are there, I'll look for people to raise their hands for questions or comments on that part of Dr. Stevens' presentation. Director Sinai.
I just don't have so much of a question as a comment based on the PAC meeting that happened this week. And knowing that we were already anticipating serious reductions in the LCAP, that there's, there's a real challenge of, and I think Laura said it on behalf of the committee earlier in the evening, of not accepting the status quo. That we've seen the data, you know, over and over again on the needle not moving for our African-American students. And, and similar to our EL students over the course of years. And the 2020 vision is something that needs to get embedded in the concept around what we're doing with this. I know it's hard not to accept the status quo when there's positions that are district positions that are attached to these jobs. So I don't know how we're going to manage that, but I really do want to urge us to be willing to take some risks and looking at what programs are having some kind of impact before we make decisions based on the staffing. And that's a really hard call, and I don't have the solution on how to do it. But I heard loud and clear from the parent, and it's, I would only be reiterating it because it's not a new appeal from the parents. It's an appeal of multiple years of really looking at what's working. And now with potentially some really significant cuts, I hope we use it as an opportunity, you know, to really hone in on what we really need to do. So I just, I wanted to echo that.
Yeah. Do you, do you want to respond, Dr. Stevens, or?
No, I, I just, I agree.
Okay. I don't see anybody else raising a hand, so I'm going to make a comment or end a question. I guess sort of along those lines, I appreciate what you just said, Director Sinai, and agree with it too. It seems to me that, you know, we also, there's, what's happening right now, as you pointed out, even with the very preliminary data, that I know we're not supposed to base anything on, Dr. Stevens, but the, but the the current situation is exacerbating all of the equity problems that we have. And, and it may be that we need to really look at the supplemental funding and, and really either completely rethink how we're spending that money, or at least rethink how we're spending a portion of it, or some of that carryover. Maybe we want to be targeting, and actually, Ms. Babett brought this up as a, as a, you know, something to think about. You know, one-on-one instruction of, we can, we can target kids. We're going to be able to identify which kids haven't been participating at all in this remote learning instruction, and are just falling further and further behind. Probably 99% of them are going to be unduplicated students. So we could really, we could do what we try to do in summer school anyway, but we could do it with either reallocating money or adding money that, that needs to be spent on those children anyway, and really try to, you know, mitigate the, really the, you know, devastating impact that this is, that the remote learning is going to have on their ability to, to, you know, meet their potential. So, so that's, I guess, just to reiterate, an agreement with, and an additional comment to what Director Sinai said. I had a quick question about the money, about, you mentioned one way to make up this gap is to spend half of what you said was the carryover. So that's, that 500, that 500 or so thousand dollars that you're talking about spending half of, that's on top of the $1 million reserve?
That's correct. Yeah, on top of the 1 million, we have $579,000 in unspent funds.
Okay, so because every year, we don't spend the whole supplemental budget, right? That's where that's coming from, right? So why not spend all of that carryover?
We could. I have only been trying to wrestle with the fact that we are likely going to have further declines in unduplicated students and only so much one-time money to apply to it. I don't have a good answer to this question, but I'm thinking for myself what the right mix of cuts and one-time spending is to be able to move from our current LCAP funding to some diminished level of funding. So that's why I'm thinking of only spending it, you know, half of it in one year, potentially the other half next year as a slower ramp to cuts, rather than protecting the budget in one year and then doubling down on those cuts the following year.
And I totally appreciate that, and just, yeah, I appreciate that. I think that it could be that this summer, maybe next summer too, are the times to spend, you know, the money we have for those kids. And then it might be, and there might be a number of teachers who are, you know, really anxious to work with those kids who haven't been able to reach them and could work with them on a one-on-one basis. And we have the million dollar reserve. So my, I mean, I guess normally I would be, I would think, I would, you know, I guess, have the same instinct, but since we have the, the point of the reserve is to, you know, mitigate the concerns that you're talking about, when we have additional carryover on top of that reserve. And we're going to have, we know we're going to have these dire needs. It seems like we should at least explore the possibility of spending even more of it. Director Leva Cutler?
No, I, I go back to my point of making sure that we're counting these students so that we can see who in fact are the students who are falling behind on the past and no pasts, on who's checking in to the online distance learning. I think that right now, this is when we should start counting those students and reaching out to them and using the funds that we do have, particularly to target that population of students. I don't think that's a hard thing. I think it's something that's very important right now that we can capture.
I would agree with Director Leva Cutler in ensuring that we get in contact with those students, but most importantly, using those funds for the students that it's intended for. I kind of made those comments a while back, and I just want to share Director Leva Cutler's sentiments around that.
That feels like very, very strong guidance, and I appreciate that. Your guidance, by the way, closely matches what Parent Advisory Committee members shared on Monday evening when we met.
Great.
So I just want to say one more thing. I mean, again, based on the information we're hearing around the economic downturn, downturn among families and the potential and real rise in unemployment and potentially long-term unemployment, we might actually see an increase of numbers of unduplicated students without necessarily getting increased money for it. If, because if the budget at the state stays flat or goes down, they might not increase our allocation, yet the demands on our student population might increase. So in some ways, I understand, Vice President Alper, your intent to maybe spend the 500,000. At the same time, I'm a little nervous that we're going to have to spread it wider in the coming year. So we don't know yet, but that's something to maybe think about.
Yeah, I think that's a totally fair point, and, and maybe we should look at the, you know, look at the reserve too, and look at the policies, our policy about spending that reserve and see whether, whether, whether the situation we're in qualifies or doesn't, or whether we want to adjust that policy. But for the, you know, as you just said, Director Sinai, we may be headed towards what we envision would be the very rare case scenario when we would need to use that money. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think another, we're having a conversation about the budget and that sort of narrow portion of the budget process, which is just trying to affect some reductions. That's only 10% of the total LCAP budget. It's really the sort of stakeholder engagement process and planning process that leads to these larger conversations about how we spend the bulk of those dollars. I doubt very much that the state will continue to require that we submit the LCAP by June. I imagine that there will be an extension. So to the extent that there's additional time that we'll have to contemplate these larger questions about the overall structure of the budget, I'm looking forward to re-engaging with the community, albeit under difficult circumstances.
Assistant Superintendent Fowlesby, is there anything you want to add?
Really, just that we need to be really cautious in terms of looking forward to the May revise and see what that would, will hold. Most CBOs are thinking that it will be a zero COLA or a significant reduction. So we're all in a state of wait and see, but it's not a good place to be. So we're all in a state of wait and see, but it's not a good place to be right now.
So zero collar would be over two years, almost $5 million in reductions?
That's what, that's what I think it showed, yeah.
Okay. It was very helpful and, I mean, sobering, but helpful to have that part of the presentation. So I think we all appreciate it. Director Labor Cutler and Director Sinek, you have your hands up, but do you mean to have them up? No? Okay. All right. Well, then let's move on to item 12.4. Director Stevens?
Great. For this item, I'm planning to ask Assistant Superintendent Samantha Tobias Espinoza to present on plans for the expense of Berkeley Educator Recruitment and Retention Act funds. BARA is divided into two parts. 95% of the funding goes straight to compensation increases for educators. 5% is set aside for specialized programming to recruit and retain teachers in hard-to-staff positions. I shouldn't say only teachers, educators in hard-to-staff positions. So Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza has been working with our labor partners, has a plan for your, to present to the board and to request approval of the plan so that we can begin to enact it in the coming school year. So I'll turn it over to, to Samantha.
And what's the time that we've allocated for this? How long, Samantha?
Um, I probably need 15 minutes. It's not going to be very long because you've already approved some of it.
We'll go to 10:10 for the presentation and then.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen. All right. So can you see the PowerPoint?
Yep.
All right. Fabulous. Um, so the 5% was set aside out of the total amount, and it was set aside to specifically create more support and strategic plans and programs to recruit stronger, highly qualified educators to our district. So the overall plan is that we would be looking at moving positions which you just approved, which are the ones with the asterisks, into the BARA budget. And then the additions we would be proposing is a classified professional development support coordinator, a individual education planner, IEP coach, and then adding some additional funds for some specific programs. So the coordinator, I have some goals and objectives that I've written. Basically, we have funding for providing professional development for our classified, but we need a point person who can help us to really navigate and work with our classified staff to really create a strong, solid program that will help us to be able to build capacity, help us to recruit by providing classes that support our employees, our future employees, on taking tests, and also support our employees on building up their skills so that they can get promotions. And so this would be a very simple, the IEP coach position would be specifically designed to help support our new and veteran special education providers and helping them with writing accurate, compliant, and meaningful IEPs for our students, basically helping to address the paperwork issue and helping to improve our compliance. And then in terms of additional funding, we would be asking for 25,000 for recruitment support to help provide us funding for having devices at job fairs, having banners, radio ads, ads in the movie theaters, things that we can get out there so that the public knows that we're hiring. And then an additional 30,000 to the 60,000 already, coming from LCAP, to attract and retain teachers of color. And this would be specifically to help create a really strong network of supports, to really help build capacity within our current staff and really create a true recruitment plan to be able to hire more high-quality educators of color. For a possible new, and it would be a matching grant where we would spend, we would match 20,000 to 20,000 for us to have a resident teacher who's going through a program to get their special education credential. And I believe the commitment is four years that they would work for the district after getting that credential. So here's some more examples. In terms of recruitment, being able to pay for people to go to hiring events such as KABE, which we were hoping to have gone to this April in San Francisco, unfortunately, it was canceled. Being able to advertise beyond our current resources, which are EdJoin and Yoga on our website. Being able to have more recruitment materials and technology to be able to really reach out to and participate in the social media that's out there that is now affecting hiring. Being able to advertise jobs early, be able to communicate with our candidates as often as possible, making early offers so that we are getting high-quality candidates and removing obstacles that may be involved in our interview process, and even holding our own hiring event, either for classified or certificated. Sorry. So the additional 30,000 that we would like to add would be really to look at creating a support cohort to help reduce isolation and turnover, empower our teachers through mentorship, create pathways to leadership positions, and provide additional professional development. And then have them also help us with evaluating our interview questions, processing, and our process for bias, recruiting from certain populations, and getting input from the current network that exists. We also, one of the things that you've approved just a few moments ago was to move over the support for our Berkeley pathway for certificated teaching, for our classified to become certificated. And so we would want to continue that. That grant does expire in 2022, so we are looking at what else is out there to be able to continue it past that point. One of those things is this new grant. They just extended, the app deadline was in April, but they've extended it to June, and that's for the special education residency program. And we are trying to work with the the whole SELPA to, so that any special teachers. This is just a slide again about the new positions, and I know you talked about doing a hiring freeze. And, but I am still proposing these positions as needed to help support our current staff. And then this just goes over where things are transferring from. And then this is our summary. So we have an anticipated 5% being $4,000, 467,900. Of that, $270,000 would be staffing, $135,000 would be program support, or a total of $405,000. And then we have indirect, and then a personal variance, because we don't know who exactly we would hire and what the cost of everything would be, leaving us with a fund balance of about $15,325, if our estimates are correct. And that's the end of my presentation.
Great. Thank you so much.
I'm going to stop sharing.
Okay. So Director Labor Cutler and then Director Brown?
Um, so how, this was, how was this budget? Thank you very much for the presentation. It's, that helps to get, this is our first read on this, right?
Right.
Um, how, how was this developed and with who?
So we started with what are hardest to fill positions, what are our positions where we're seeing a lot of turnover. And then we discussed with the unions and did some research in terms of what, what are seen as positive supports out there. There've been quite a few articles that have been published lately about supporting teachers of color and, and the fact that dealing with the isolation mentor can make a huge difference. And so that's part of the reason why we're looking at that. In terms of the classified professional development, we have funds, but we don't have anybody who specifically has a job to really organize that. And so it's fallen on different people's desks where somebody can't concentrate on it and really support the program the way it needs to be, to really work with our classified staff in all the different types of positions. It's create a training for IAs than it is for custodians. And so we need somebody who can help us to do that. And the IEP coach, as you know and are aware, we have a need in our, in our special education department to increase the compliance and the, the skills of our teachers and other service providers in doing the paperwork part of the special education job.
Um, I, I appreciate that, and I think it's come from, from many sources. The, but I would feel more comfortable, and I don't know, that we would have another process for this, that this would be our first read of this proposal for expenditures in the budget, and to make sure that we have somebody, that people have read this, the community, our teachers, everybody has read this and can come back to us and may comment on it for, for our next meeting. It's not that I oppose it, but I, I think a little bit more vetting would help with, and I don't know the process, if it's, it's gone through other vetting processes besides internally and with a few, some teachers. So, you know, that's what I was thinking, that perhaps it could be, that this would be our first read and it can come back, because we're going to meet next week again, that people would have had an opportunity to review it and think about it and come back, and then we can vote on it.
Director Berry, were you going to say something?
Yes, to that point, Dr. Labor Cutler, actually, this budget has had a review in keeping with the language of the BARA measure, which specified that there did need to be citizen oversight. One of the things that is actually on the consent agenda for the Board this evening is the ratification of having the, the BSEP Planning and Oversight Committee now become, with a bylaw revision, also the committee that reviews the BARA plans. And so that addition was made to the bylaws, and the Planning and Oversight Committee actually has had two readings of this plan. Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza went to the Oversight Committee twice, actually made some substantial changes based on their comments, adding the goals and objectives, for example. So it has had some significant public review already.
And if I could just interject and ask, Mrs. Tobias Espinoza, I assume that you, you're wanting the new positions approved in enough time to actually post them and hire them, is that?
Yeah, I, I would like to get the best candidates we can, and the sooner we can get it out there, the better. I do not have a problem if we need to bring it back for next week. It's only one week, but.
You froze there for a second, but.
Sorry.
Okay. I mean, I think our question would be what, what more outreach would be done in that week? Or if there is any that would be done, or if the Board needs more time. But anyway, let me see what other people think. Director Brown?
Well, my question is a little bit unrelated to that part, if it's okay to go back, unless you wanted to continue discussion on this particular.
Well, no, go, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to ask a question in regards to the retention and recruitment of, of teachers of color. Under that column, I didn't see anything in regards to professional development for our hiring staff in an effort to, to support them in making sure that there isn't any, like, implicit bias, or they know what they're looking for, just to, just, just professional development that would support them in hiring teachers of color within our district. And so I didn't see that there, and I thought that, that would be an important factor.
It is, it is actually in there. It's just sort of, I think, worded differently than what you're looking for. So that is one of our goals, is to really look at our process, look at our interview questions that we ask, make sure that we are removing obstacles and the bias, and addressing that with our principles and our other hiring managers.
Director Sinek? Director Brown, did you have a? Okay, Director Sinek?
So I think, I think that's a great question, Director Brown, and maybe what would be good is if we, well, twofold. If we do bring it back next week, maybe it'd be good to see where that could be more explicit. And then I'm wondering two things, going back to what Director Labor Cutler was saying in the sense of if it came back next week. So it sounds like the PNO committee gave some good feedback. I guess the question is, did BCCE and BFT also weigh in on the plan?
Um, BFT has, we talked about it today, and they have given it, it's their blessing. Of course, there will be need for negotiations afterwards about impact, but they are in favor of the plan. BCCE is also aware of the plan, but it's been hard to get a lot of feedback.
So what do you mean, negotiation around the impact?
So whenever we do anything in terms of creating positions or creating anything in the district, it leads to the fact that the union can ask for negotiations about the impact of whatever decisions we make. And so the union is asking that before we implement any specific things, that we would be able to negotiate any impact. So if there was.
With the positions that you're recommending in there?
They're in favor of those positions, and those would not be negotiable. It would be, if we created a program where we were providing stipends, or we were doing something like that, that would be negotiable.
Okay. And so I guess, one, just to clarify, I think, Vice President Alper, when you're talking about hiring freeze, we're not talking about this pot of money, because we specifically just got our voters approving this 5% of the money to do exactly what you're laying out. So.
Yes.
Yeah. So we're, nobody's thinking that this would be where the hiring freeze would go into effect. And if we were to not approve this tonight and to hold off till next week, does that give you any opportunity where you would think you would get more significant feedback from BCCE around the professional development aspects there? And if so, I would suggest we, we go ahead and put this on the agenda for next week.
Um, it can't hurt to try. I can attempt to make contact and, and try to.
Oh, she keeps phrasing.
We can hear what you, last, what you said.
Last part of what you.
Oh, it can't hurt to, to, to have the week. I can definitely reach out to BCCE and attempt to get input and to get feedback.
I mean, just, just, it's, it's not really a week. I mean, it, it's a week from now, but the agenda, you know, will be published Friday and.
Yeah.
It's not a lot of time. Go ahead, Director Labor Cutler.
Well, I think I'm particularly interested in the teachers of color, especially we have teachers of color who are exiting, who are leaving already. And, and I've mentioned this before in terms of having an exit interview with our teachers. Would any, would any of these things in place would have helped you stay in Berkeley? And right now, you, I think you've already, we've already gotten the notice of who are the teachers that are leaving. And so it would be helpful to have that kind of feedback, particularly for the people who are already leaving our district. Would this have helped if this, this was in place? And that's what I, that's why I think if we could push it up particularly to. And that's what I, that's why I think if we could push it up particularly to special populations of our teachers who are both leaving and those who are staying too, would this help you stay? I think it would help me to know that, okay, we're in the right path. But I definitely believe that we need to have a little bit more input, if that's our feedback on it. And I don't know, maybe we'll go no place, but at least I know that we've tried. Yeah.
I mean, everything that you all, that you are saying makes sense to me. I just, if you're saying that, you know, putting this, if we pass it next week, that it won't, you don't, you're not worried that that'll impact our ability to hire the best people? Then that seems fine. But we're talking about a time in the district where, where everybody is working like at a 200% capacity, and we're talking about in the next five days, doing more. I don't know, I just, I mean, it's fine with me, but do you think it's going, are you fine with waiting a week? Or for this to be passed, or are you at all concerned that it's going to impact our ability? Because we could do more outreach, but if we end up getting a worse pool, it just doesn't seem worth it to me.
So for me, in terms of the positions, I don't think that what I would actually suggest.
Say that again, because you froze.
Sorry, my internet's not the best. Yeah, I think that a week's not going to make a huge impact in terms of the positions. What I do think is important is we could bring back the, a better plan after sitting down on, in terms of like the, the project support monies, in terms of how we're going to spend those, in terms of what would those look like and how would those be used?
So.
More beneficial?
Okay. Well, so what if we brought, because what if we brought, either approve tonight the positions or approve them next week? And maybe if you're not, if there's additional work or outreach you want to do for some of the expenditures that don't require posting positions, we could do that even later than next week, but to try to approve the positions at least by next week. Does that make sense? Director Stevens, does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Director Leva, okay. So, so we'll pass this item and not do anything tonight? So everybody, everybody good with that? And it could come back on, it could come back on. I mean, this is for President Appel and Director Stevens, but it could come back on consent potentially next week. We don't necessarily have to have another discussion about it.
Okay.
Is that? Okay. Great. All right, let's move on. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza. I just will say, it's very exciting that we're going to be doing, doing so many things that we've been wanting to do for so many years, and that we have the voters to thank for giving us the resources to do it. So thanks for leading that effort. Okay, let's go to the last action item, which I think should be very quick. Item 12.5, Dr. Eva motion to approve the projected permit needs as specified in the annual declaration. Much by Director Brown, second by Director Leva Cutler. Ms. Chires, you still with us?
Director Senna?
Yes.
Director Brown?
Yes.
Director Hem?
Yes.
Director Leva Cutler?
Yes.
Vice President Alper?
Yes, and President Appel's absent.
That's right.
All right. Now we have extended public comment. If there, is Jay still with us? Stenichki?
He is, and I'm here too.
Okay. So how does this work? If someone wants to make public comment, they raise their hand online, right?
Yes.
Okay, now is the opportunity to speak in public comment if you would like to. So use the raise your hand function on Zoom, and we will unmute you. I'm not seeing anybody. Give people like five more seconds. That's fair. Nobody having raised their hand. I will adjourn the meeting then. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, for all your hard work, staff.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
All right, take care.